Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Glenorki City Council on Monday. I'm Su Hickey, acting mayor of Glenorki and chairperson of this afternoon's meeting. Glenorki City Council acknowledges the Mooneeena people as traditional owners of this land. While sadly, the Mooneeena people did not survive colonisation, we recognise all Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the original owners and continuing custodians of the land and waters of this island, the territory. We pay our respect to Aboriginal elders, past and present. We commit to working for a city that welcomes and respects all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. Now, joining me here in council today, we have Alderman Yaxley. Thank you. We have councillor Kendall, we have councillor Quick, there's Alderman Dunspie. We have the general manager, Mr Tony McMullin, we have Alderman King, we have Alderman Slade, we have Alderman Josh Cockshark, and we have Alderman Alderton. Before we open our agenda, I take this opportunity to make a statement about workplace safety. Glenorki City Council takes workplace health and safety seriously, and this includes physical and psychological safety. Glenorki City Council has the duty to ensure that a safe workplace is provided for our employees, elected members, contractors, volunteers, and members of the public who may be present at tonight's meeting or council workplace. Council meetings form part of the council's workplace, and it is expected that everyone who attends council meetings will behave in a polite and respectful manner. Any disagreement tonight should be expressed respectfully, remembering both during debate and decision-making that we are elected to represent and serve the people of Glenorki and to make our city the best we can. Finally, I note that the open section of this meeting is being livestreamed, and an audiovisual recording of the meeting will occur in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. Members of the public are not permitted to make audiovisual recordings of the council meetings. We have eighteen items on the agenda, seventeen in the open and one in the close this afternoon. And agenda item one is apologies. And I believe we have one length of absence, is that right, general manager?
That's correct.
Mayor Bec Thomas. Do I have someone to move the confirmation of the minutes of the open meeting held 23rd of March 2024? Thank you. So Alderman Slade and Alderman Cocksh- uh, sorry, Alderton, they can do this. Any discussion on those minutes? Announcements by the chair. I do have, oh, sorry, I put the question, all those in favour, raise your hand. That's accepted unanimously. Announcements by the chair. Tonight, I would like to inform of the public of a new meeting that the Glenorki City Council has announced a new partnership with the Safer Australian Roads and Highways Group, also known as the SARA group, and that we have become a Yellow Ribbon Safety Council. This means that the council will be working to promote road safety and ensure that all road users are safe on our roads. In the past ten years, an average of thirty-five people a year have died on Tasmanian roads, and almost two hundred and eighty people a year have been seriously injured. The toll this takes on our community is immeasurable. These deaths and injuries leave scars that will be counted for the cost of for many years to come. As the Yellow Ribbon Council, we will be lighting the chambers in yellow for National Road Safety Week between the 5th and 12th of May, as well as placing yellow ribbons on all council vehicles and promoting the wearing of yellow lope ribbons to help raise awareness across the community, which I'm pleased to see that all our elected members are mostly doing. Council will be an advocate for SARA's harm elimination and minimisation strategy to Tasmanian road policy makers, working collaboratively with other road safety councils to ensure a coordinated approach across municipal boundaries. SARA Group was established in 2012 by Mr Peter Fraser, after his twenty-three-year-old daughter Sarah was killed in a road crash. Since then, Peter has made it his mission to increase road support, sorry, support for road safety. And if you've ever heard Peter talk about the importance of road safety in the context of his daughter, tragic story, you will know what I mean when I say he's passionate and a strong advocate. Council is extremely pleased to be working with SARA to promote road safety initiatives in Glenorki and urge all road users to think about their safety and the safety of others every time they're on the road. Now, sorry, I've just lost my place. Do we have any pecuniary interest notifications?
I'd like to declare an interest on item number sixteen.
Item number sixteen, can you just tell me which one that is, director?
For the Debbie, the general manager.
Oh, Debbie, yes, fair enough, thank you. And do we have a response to previous public questions taken on notice? And now we move on to public question time. We have fifteen minutes for public question time, which I can extend if necessary. Thank you. Who'd like to go first? Miss Martin?
Would the Alderman chair?
Yes, Alderman, sorry, councillor.
I would like to raise something that is really concerning to me before we have public question time. At a recent public meeting, issues regarding the pool and the role of the Glenorki City Council were raised, and a motion of no confidence was passed at that meeting. I think it is rather disingenuous and very hypocritical of anyone who asks a question tonight who voted for that motion. Very hypocritical. If they have no confidence in us, why are they rocking up here tonight? To ask questions of us? If you have no confidence in your doctor, you find a new doctor. If you have no confidence in your dentist, you find another dentist. At the next Glenorki council election, if you're dissatisfied with us, vote us out. But in the meantime, to have the temerity to rock up here tonight, having passed a motion of no confidence in us, and expect us to take your questions seriously? You've got to be joking. You really have to be joking.
Thank you.
It is so hypocritical.
Thank you. I think the last year has been very stressful for many people, and sometimes Aldermen take things personally as well. So we'll move on to public question time, and now Billaskis Crew to ask her question.
Sorry, I haven't prepared for a question because I've been really busy with the taxi rally today. I'm coming straight from there. I'll just go straight into it. It's the incident in Kootana. At the meeting today, we were very fortunate to have had at the rally members of parliament from all three major parties. And my board committed to working long term to sort out the problem with our youth, which comes down to my petition that's about to be tabled. You'd probably wonder what it has to do with council, but we've decided that we need to work together in order to get these kids from, to stop the kids from re-offending. And all parties are happy to work together to engage our youth, to look for, excuse me, long-term results, and to, just to look for pathways by improving facilities and local councils. They are restless because they don't have proper facilities here. I know that budget is a huge thing, but we can't blame the kids for offending them. They are restless. We need to sort something out, and we need to work together. Now, is Glenorki City Council prepared to be an active partner in this initiative? And it will entail having to work with the police, with the political parties, and all working in harmony? But we do have to provide our youth with the facilities that they need. I know nobody wants to hear a swimming pool, but we do need a swimming pool. We do need sporting facilities. We need green spaces. We don't want to have ghettos here in Glenorki.
Well, I commend you for that, Miss Crew. I totally agree with you. And I'm pretty certain, I confidently speak on behalf of the other Alderman elected officials, in that we are all at our wits' end, wondering how we can improve things for the youth. As you would appreciate, it's not just a Glenorki problem. Unfortunately, it seems to be an Australia problem and pretty much a global problem with disengaged youth. I think there's many strategies that need to be looked at and many, many opinions to be heard. So I don't think I need to put it to a vote unless anyone would argue that. But we are coming together with a committee, we've committed to a committee called a Safe and Clean City Committee, and on that racism, youth, and other issues are the highest priority. So I would say we are still working out the terms of reference, but we would love to work with the community on any solutions, and the youth themselves for that matter, to find solutions. It'd be wonderful to be a world leader in this space for a change instead of a follower. So can I commend you on that question? Yes, thank you, Alderman Slade.
All I can say, acting mayor, is that we, the council has got that internal group of members, of senior staff. I just wondered, is that something that, of course, this is really urgent. Is there something that could be harnessed in there before we get underway with a committee? That's all, I might look at the general manager, but is that a possibility? I was just thinking.
I haven't seen what's in the petition yet, but we've certainly, we've certainly got the opportunity to have it as a priority.
I just thought that might be a bit easier, acting mayor, to start off with that, and at least give some hope to those poor victims, that the council has got something that's internal, that's been going with their staff and other stakeholders. And the one of the council will still be underway, but that may take some time. But at least we've got this internal one that's got some good runs on the ground with other key stakeholders that are imperative to what Ms Crew has just outlined, so, yeah.
Anyone else?
Thank you, acting mayor. Miss Crew, I commend you. I'll hardly, I'm trying to do it, so I'm sure we're all doing it. With the youth and our staff are working, there was a barbecue the other this morning, a barbecue at the end now, to try and help those kids that might not have had a feed or reengage. The council's constantly trying to do things to help. We've got some really great staff who are working on it. But there's never enough, I don't know if we can ever do enough, so we'll continue to try, and we are committed to that and to steward what Alderman Slade said. I'd raise it was totally unacceptable, totally unacceptable.
If that head of that department, if they have another go, acting mayor, could make contact, then I think that would overcome a lot of the slowness of the office.
Yep, and facilities are always a big issue out here, but we're all committed to getting it.
Finish on that. We, I look after Clarence and Munner Sports Centre on a proponential basis, and we're trying to get our outdoor court set up for anyone to use, but obviously particularly younger people, for outdoor sports, which is attached pretty much to the childcare centre in Benjepil Park. We're working with another group at the moment, which we're also looking to use to bring youth from Cottgrove High School into work on that project or have work experience and reengage or engage kids into, into normal life.
I'm just point of order. We're here in debate within public question time. We tell our members of the public that they are allowed to ask questions and not debate, and we're entering into debate.
Fair enough.
I thought we were just adding to.
Adding to. Miss Crew, if it's okay with you, we'll be in touch with you this week.
Absolutely, and I'm happy to share my petition with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, much to my horror, I've just realised that I didn't draw attention to item five, and those questions received by Nicole Valt from Claremont and Claire Lord Cork of Collins Vale have been answered and addressed in the papers. So going back to question time, who would like to come up first? Thank you, Miss Brian.
Janice Brown, Building Avenue Montrose. Where are the compliance certificates held for the Glenorki Wharf Memorial Pool?
Acting mayor, we'd have need to take that on notice, but could get some more understanding of which compliance certificate.
Sorry, I'll read the rest of the question and then you can take it on notice, that's fine. Who in council has oversight over enforcing the legislative national standards for the operation of a safe pool? When the council claimed it was unsafe and had to close, what was the last date, the date of the last compliance certificate, and where is that held? Who is responsible for communicating this to the insurer? And why does it appear there was no asset management plan supporting the maintenance of the pool for the community?
I think if it's okay with you, we'll take it all on notice.
Thank you, thank you. Right, now just the preamble to my second question. At the 31st of July 2023 council meeting, at about one hour into the video recording, the following was stated. But we have really, we have two really good regional pools within fifteen minutes of this city, so we do not have to ask ourselves as a community, so we do have to ask ourselves as a community, and I am hang on, and I am talking the broader community here, do we actually need one? A pool, that is, okay, that was stated. A little later, the following was stated, does Glenorki actually need a pool? Doesn't the council realise that this is a very valid and compelling reason for the need of an elector poll? Don't the residents of Glenorki deserve a say on whether they need a pool? A positive response will assist the council when seeking a priority community infrastructure programme grant. The council keeps mentioning the cost of the elector poll, but it would not have been required if people had not been given disinformation by the council and their failed bias communications. Many people I have spoken to when seeking support for both petitions did not know the pool was closed and was shot. They proceeded to tell me what the pool means to them, and were especially concerned about unneglected youth. We need to know what the community wants, or you need to know what the community wants. I am aware of the cost of the elector poll, but it's necessary to allow the residents of Glenorki to have their say. After all, the council wastes so much of taxpayers' money, funds, in many ways, including on non-call, whole-of-government responsibilities, costs shifted on to us. Just to mention a few. Sorry. Five million dollars set aside for infrastructure for the Berradale Caravan Park for Mona. When the BMX track was closed, how much of the $750,000 contract was spent for Convict Priority Limited when the development did not proceed at Tullasa Park? Approximately $500,000 to Cyril Council to replace a BMX track thirty-five kilometres away from our young people. How much ratepayer funds will be spent dismantling our BMX track to benefit Mona? Has the Berradale Public Reserve been transferred to Mona? How many, how much money did council waste on consultants and plans for the CBD playground that was cancelled just before going to tender? $520,000 spent on the empty block in Piltro Street. $725,000 in the 2024 budget to operate the Moonee Art Centre. $820,000 for the two-year contract for the Job Hub, 22 and 23, and $650,000 for this financial year, which is a federal government responsibility, not the ratepayers of Glenorki. Eight million dollars for the sale of the debt. Out of the eight million dollars, 2.4 was spent on state-owned Lloyd Road, approximately $3 million to cut fill from Mona to Tullasa Reserve, uh, Tullasa Park, sorry, when this was promised for community projects such as the pool.
Miss Brown, I'm just going to put you up there. Quite a few of those things you've said are not truthful. And I do know that we've
Are in the documents in council documents?
I'm telling you, we've answered you on many occasions on those things, trying to set you right. And I understand and believe that you think they're right, but they are not right. So I don't think we're going to take any more of that. I'm happy to accept your questions on notice. If you'd like to give them over to the director.
Well, I'm going to proceed to the question then.
No, you won't.
I need to, because it's very, very
Miss Brian, I'd really like this council to have a much better relationship with you, and I don't want to be shouting at you, and I don't want you shouting at me.
No, I don't want to be accused of wasting money on an elector poll.
Miss Brian, your elector poll, which I admire your tenacity. I admire all of that, the way you've gone about doing that. What I don't like is that it's going to cost possibly $200,000 to $250,000 for the elector poll when the questions you are asking, we have already done. We have already commenced work on fixing that pool. We have already written, I've rung the premier personally. I've rung the other members, we've sent out all the letters. So what you're asking for is X, Y, Z, and you want us to spend $250,000 on ratepayers' money just to say, yes, we'd like a pool? But our questions are wrong.
People in Glenorki don't know that the pool's gone. I can show you this.
I've been in the debate with
No, this is a new document that's been made that's taken over the pool. This is in the Land Information System of Tasmania, and this is King George V Park. And the pool site has been put into this document. I can tell you that now. That has been, I'll just show you.
Can I raise a point of order? If we go back to the February council meeting, I actually moved a motion, it was agreed by, you know, essentially around the table, that if you look at point four, note that there will be extensive opportunities for community input as part of the Paulberry Development and Alternative Options Project, which is currently underway. And that the consultants will carefully consider and analyse the options put to them and bring their recommendations back to council. And five was, in light of bipartisan election commitments, the state election discon of $5 million funding, direct the general manager to identify priority works required and start planning to safely repair and reopen the Glenorki Wharf Memorial Pool, while long-term solutions are being discussed, which is the MI Global Process. So we have the community what they've done so far, and upon the receipt of the $5 million from the now rock with Liberal Government, we have already commenced work on the seals, I believe, on the pool, and identify priority work so we can start reopening. We have listened to the community. We're going to reopen the pool, but we have to wait on the $5 million funding and get other works completed because we can't reopen the pool until it's safe.
So do you have a commitment for the $5 million?
Yes. Well, what I've got is promises, like everyone else got.
So you don't have a firm commitment?
But I have, not from lack of trying. I have rung the premier, I have written to the premier. I have rung the Minister for Sport, I have written to the Minister for Sport. This afternoon, we spoke to Madeleine Ogilvy. We have written to every single member of CLARC, reminding them that this is, we need the $5 million. We need, and we would accept $1 million to start the work because we're up for, what do you call, architects, et cetera, to start work. Now, this is a hold gap, as you'd imagine. We're just going to be able to fix the pool and hold it. Then we're going to do all the other work which you've been asking us to do, which is to come up with the diagrams and plans for a new pool. Then we've got to go out and seek funding for that, and somehow or other, in a very, very tight budget, we have to work out ways to fund the pool. And at the moment, this year, we have a $200,000 expected surplus. Your elector poll will cost $250,000 plus thousand.
Well, if you'd listened to the community, it wouldn't have been required.
Yes, that's lovely, Miss Brian. I do ask you to take your seat now, please, and I would like to start.
Oh, leave these here, because that shows you the current title, that shows you the new title that is included at the pool. And I'm just telling you now, something is going on, and if you have not received an assurance of $5 million, well, there's something very wrong here.
Yes, there is something very wrong. We don't like your accusations of sinister conspiracy theories. What does that mean? Absolutely nothing. You've got a pink, black, and green map.
That is the new title that includes
No, excuse me.
Point of order, point of order, ma'am.
It's all right.
Can we request that Miss Brian provides us with some concrete evidence to back some of her documentation up? Would she be happy to provide evidence to council rather than accusations?
There isn't any evidence, it's off the list.
Miss Brian, your excuse for counsel.
There is the evidence. I'm leaving now, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's most unfortunate. Okay. Thank you very much. We have Leanne.
Good afternoon, everybody. Diane Gilli, Wildlife Court, Granton. Detachments for August in 2023 mention the involvement of the Department of State Growth and Mona in their KG5 precinct, which included the pool site. The plan talks about an eighteen-hour-a-day entertainment hub connected to Mona by a dumping fill on the flat area behind the pool. What would that be for? I have no idea, but I'll
I'm acting mayor, the private area is at the car park, sorry, park.
Behind the pool?
So there was some millings actually stored there, and that's what we resurfaced at the car park with some time ago. So we actually milled that off a road, so I've got gravel that we recovered, and then we used it to resurface the car park.
Nothing to do with this eighteen-hour-a-day? Okay, let's see what goes on then.
Not connected at all.
Good car park. Also, why are we spending ratepayers' money on a job hub, which is not the core responsibility for council or ratepayers, but perhaps maybe the responsibility of state and federal governments? Why do we, why are we running a jobs hub?
Well, Diane, I actually felt the same as you before I was enlightened. And we're actually funded by the state government, and it is considered such a good programme. And I've personally been there. Senator Tammy Tyrell thinks it's a star version of a jobs hub, helping lots of people in the Glenorki area connect jobs, and she is pushing for it. That'd be sound for to be used and the funding method to be used for Australia-wide. But if the director would like to add any further comment, but in other words, the ratepayers are no longer funding any exit from it. Is that correct?
We are, we are, we are, and we send it on the trial ground, and we equip to that ground, and that covers the entire operation of the jobs hub. Thank you very much.
Satisfied?
Lovely.
Yes, thank you. Right, do we have any other questions with or without notice? Eddie Steenbergh.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
These questions are not about the pool. Since the last council meeting, council has had a, in fact, a week ago, council had a budget workshop. I'd like to know what that was about and what the next step in the budget process is, please.
Yes, well, I'll pass that to the general manager, but I can assure you it was about the budget.
I believe that. Pretty, acting mayor. So we have a series of council workshops as part of the budget development process. It starts off in, probably started off in October, November last year, and we're working through various parts of the budget. We're at the point with the last workshop of looking at our operating budget for the year. We previously looked at our capital budget, and we've Uh, for, for the year, we previously looked at our capital budget and we've looked at, uh, budget business cases. We've looked at the, the budget process, um, in past workshops. Uh, the next, uh, workshop that we're moving towards is a, is a workshop to bring it all together. So essentially, uh, bring the whole, um, proposed, uh, twenty twenty four, twenty five budget together for council to, to, to work through. Uh, once we've got that sorted, we then, uh, will bring the, um, uh, bring the proposed budget formally to council for adoption in open council.
Will it be a public event relating to the budget before it comes to council?
Uh, I'd need to double check through you, I'd need to double check what our, um, what our, uh, consultation process is. But we, we ordinarily hold a, a, a budget workshop for the community, uh, prior to the, um, adoption of the budget. So that, that is a normal event, but I'd need to double check the programme for this year. I'm going to have, have, um, lined up in terms of columns.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, the next question is a question I think I passed up here once a year since I've started coming. And it's about the yellow bins that we all have at the front of our, or most of us have at the front of our house for recycling. And the question is, can this council provide me with any evidence or statistics to reassure me? That any of the plastic I put in my yellow bin is actually being recycled or reused?
Uh, do you want to pass that to the director?
For three, you may, I'm happy to start and then perhaps.
Good, thanks.
Uh, so you may recall, um, probably a couple of years ago, that we had a, a, a dire situation in terms of recycling. In fact, we had a major recycling contractor for Victoria and Tasmania fill over. Uh, and then concerns at that stage that, um, you know, essentially the recycling system could, could collapse, which would have been a disaster. So effectively, a new, um, new contractor was brought, brought on board, uh, as an interim measure. Uh, from there, the Southern Tasmanian councils got together and, um, worked through the necessary approvals and a, and a, and a shared tendering process. To, um, create a new, um, a fresh recycling contract. Uh, we now also have a regional, uh, waste authority, Stra- Strawa or Spraw, I'm not sure how to say that, things sprawl. Um, which coordinates that on behalf of the, um, of the southern region. And it also coordinates the, the use of any landfill levies, um, that are, that are received by the state government. Um, the director may want to add a couple more, um, things to that.
Thank you, uh, through you, ma'am. Through, um, the straw, the Southern Tasmanian, the media relates the driving issue. Uh, we receive, uh, quarterly reports about what, uh, volumes of recycling has been received at the Cleanaway, um, the recycling depot. And they actually, um, break it down into general canages of overall waste from each council. Cause they, they run the, um, collection service for all twelve southern councils. And they break it down further into, um, areas like pavement, newsprint, um, H G P E. So they tell us what's going in and what's actually going out of the science. So they are actually, um, moving it for recycling. So we haven't got a pelletisation plant here in South, so they take it somewhere where it can actually be processed and reused. So it's not being stored on site, I guess I'm saying.
That, that's positive. Will council publish those statistics?
Uh, they are really just for internal, um, stats, so we're aware of, um, what's going on. They're, they're actually for all councils, um, and I'm not sure if we're able to, but I'll check to see if Straw would actually release them.
I think residents would find those statistics quite measurably.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Uh, and, uh, I, I have one, obviously, there are one. Now, would you forgive me? I've just, I've just forgotten your name.
My name's Kim Chatchell, yeah. And Tulosa Street in Glenorkie. Um, and it's really something that Stuart raised in, uh, in his, um, quest, I guess, to council was the appetite for a collaborative sort of, uh, system with the Friends of Glenorkie Pool. To work forward with developing the pool and, you know, strengthening any funding applications and, yeah. So that's what I'm asking a question for. I've met with nearly all of you in the room now and, and, um, would like to probably see the Friends of Glenorkie Pool, cause we've incorporated, become a, like an auxiliary organisation within the pool. That might be able to do ongoing funding for programmes and might be running the pool and stuff like that.
Do you mind answering that one, Alderman Floe?
Oh, I'm not preempting my notice of motion, but part of my notice of motion does take on board, um, having a group that can come in and, and share, um, auxiliary things like that of common purpose, things that the pool, uh, that we're trying to do with the pool, whether it be the council or other people.
Yes, I, I think it would be safe to say that we would all like a change of direction.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? So then we move on to item eight, activities of the mayor, and this covers the period where, um, mayor.
Petition, petition.
Oh, I missed that. Oh, item seven, I beg your pardon. Any petitions addressing council meetings or deputations?
Uh, yes, acting mayor, there is a petition, uh, total, so this is the petition, uh, and the petition, uh, is signed by, uh, two thousand five hundred and sixty four signatures, um, of which, um, between, uh, one thousand seven hundred and thirty six and one thousand seven hundred and fifty two signatures purport to be Glenorkie electors. So we've yet to do the official check on the, on the number of electors. Um, the petition, um, reads, uh, uh, petition to Glenorkie City Council, Mayor Alderman and General Manager. When he undersigned, hereby request that council, one, hold a poll of the electors of the Glenorkie municipality. Two, urgently repair, reopen, redevelop and retain Glenorkie War Memorial Pool in the centre of Glenorkie CBD by obtaining government grants. It proposes a poll question. Do you agree with Sabre Pool community, Glenorkie City Council urgently repair, redevelop, sorry, rede- repair, reopen, redevelop and retain the Glenorkie War Memorial Pool in the centre of Glenorkie CBD by obtaining government grants?
Thank you, you've received a note, well.
Uh, we're just.
Thank you. Now we move on to activities of the mayor. Um, and this period of time covers the activities of Mayor Thomas as well as myself. Does anyone have any questions? Do you want to move at the moment?
First I'll move, exactly.
Move it, yes, thank you. All of the side of seconded. Anyone?
I've got no questions, mayor, but anyone else?
Yes, thank you, all the, uh, councillor Kendall.
Thank you, acting mayor. Um, it's about your meeting with Tammy Tyrrell, which you were referring to earlier. I was curious about whether the pool was discussed and whether there was support for the funding of the five million promised from Tammy or discussed in your meeting.
Uh, not to my recollection. I'll have to defer to the director. I don't think there was any mention of the pool.
Sorry, acting mayor, what?
Uh, the second director.
Yeah, I've tracked that.
Tracy, did Sen- did Senator Tyrrell, um, discuss the pool? No, but I would like to say to you, it was a fascinating meeting. Senator, uh, Tammy Tyrrell is a very dynamic person. Um, she has spent twelve years of her life in the jobs sector, um, area. And she's really passionate that things can be done better in, um, connecting job seekers to jobs and, um, more compassionate ways of doing things as well. So I found it to be a really enlightening, um, visit. And she was also very impressed with our jobs hub and she spoke to the staff who were highly engaged and to a couple of, um, clients. And yes, uh, uh, overall, I think it was a really good outcome and she's very keen on recommending this particular style of job hub as a nationwide programme. So wish her the best. Any other questions? Uh, received a note?
Back to the mover.
Back to the mover, thank you.
I'm happy to hear. Thanks very much for that.
Very much. So I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour, as you have, received unanimously. And now, that was a big one, um, item nine, committees reference and working group reviews. Would you like to have a mover, please?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman King, thank you, Alderman Cockshaw. Any discussion?
Uh, mayor, I think a lot of work's been done on this and a lot's yet to be done. Uh, I look forward to this moving forward and I'll leave it to Michael Alderman, councillors to discuss.
Thank you, Alderman Floe.
Uh, just to say, look, everybody knows my feelings and I'm just really pleased that, uh, we're really on the way of getting some committees going, which is good. And I accept the fact that, um, um, there's been some internal ones that, that have worked very, very well. And, and perhaps tonight was example of, of one there which, um, the two may have come together on, on a subject which is quite obviously, uh, creating some, uh, really dish, disharmony in our committee and I read that regarding, uh, racial sort of crime, whatever. I'm just pleased it's happening and, and my, I suppose my underlying pursuit of these is the simple fact is that they worked so well before. And I'm just so pleased that there will be some, uh, and I'm pleased that they've been sort of handed out to what's the best way to do the representation on them. And at the end of the day, just gets elected members, uh, a bit of hand on what's going on, sometimes in an evolving things. And that's got to be a better outcome for the city. So I'm pleased to see it, ma'am. Acting mayor.
Yes, thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, acting mayor. Um, yeah, also, um, when we had that first discussion about the committees, um, I was having pretty good definitions and, um, and I wanted to see some consistency around the names and the purpose of those, um, of the group. So it's good to see that after the reviews happened, that we've got the, the two, uh, committees and the working group, um, coming together. Um, so yeah, so it's just, it's a pleasing thing, um, you have a greater responsibility to keep our community safe. It's one of our main objectives that we must do and uphold, uh, and also with the Economic Development Committee. Um, I think it's been potentially a neglected part of our city in terms of the local businesses. And I think if we can, um, see some positive, um, outcomes from those two, uh, groups, we'll be positive to see, so.
Thank you. Any further contributions? Thank you, Alderman Alderton.
Yes, uh, thank you, acting mayor. I think it's, it's good that these two long overdue committees are being considered now and we're going to, um, create and fill some vacancies. I think it's vital that we, uh, get the safer communities working group up and running as quickly as possible. Because we do have a, a serious issue with, uh, antisocial behaviour in the community. Uh, along with, um, the, the jobs hub steering committee, I think that's vital because we need to create more growth and more jobs in the municipality.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor King.
Thank you. Now, we hear all about social cohesion in our media and sadly, we see examples on the mainland of behaviour that is absolutely abhorrent and puts real stress on our communities. We saw an example over the weekend of people of, uh, other ethnic communities having their taxis attacked because they looked to be different and people took their venom out against them. Tonight, once again, we have had people during question time question the role of local government. I think it should be the first responder, not the last. We have three tiers of government and to me, as a former member of, uh, the federal parliament, I, I know it firsthand that councils are quick to respond to ensure that there is social cohesion. And I welcome this safer communities working group. It's the only way. We're at the grassroots, we're strapped for funds, but we do a really good job. And we have our tentacles, for want of a better word, into a whole lot of community organisations that can help us respond when communities are put under pressure. So I'd like to thank all those who are part of the establishment of this and I look forward to, uh, a report in the coming months.
Thank you. Any further discussions? Thank you, councillor, uh, councillor Kendall.
Thank you, acting mayor. Um, yeah, I'm really happy to see this model come in after a lot of discussion, many workshops. So we've got the, um, standing committees and then we've got the capacity to spring up working groups in the, in the occasion of a, you know, topic based short term issue. So I think it's a good model and I think something I'm really passionate about is connecting elected members with the community and also subject matter and experts. So we can have a bit of a closer kind of connection rather than a potentially fraught one. Um, I think the risk when you're setting up committees is the capacity to enact whatever decisions come out of those committees. So that was really important to me in discussion, that we don't over commit to too many committees, committees for committee's sake. And that the important, um, expert advice that comes from those committees is actually able to be acted on. So my question coming out of that is, um, and maybe this is to the director or for the room. Um, what mechanisms will working groups have to receive funding for recommendations that they agree on?
Ooh, general manager.
Through you, ma'am, um, through the, through the budget process. So the, um, the intention is that, um, we maintain, uh, you know, a discipline on, on our committees in the sense that, um, we need to close the loop with the full council table. So minutes, our intention is for the minutes of those meetings to, to be brought and put on to the council agenda. Uh, so there is a closing of the loop with the full council and the full council is the, is the body that can then, uh, commit additional funding if required. So both, it provides both input into our, um, corporate strategic planning and our annual plan and our budget. But also if there are issues that come, come up through the course of the year, there's the ability for the full council to, to consider those for resourcing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No, I'll close. But Alderman King.
Thank you so much, acting mayor. Uh, really grateful for the input from fellow Alderman and councillors around the table. Just to concur with one thing all the councillors quick said, you said, we do a good job. We don't get it always right, but the, the people around this table do do a good job and, and I'm not frightened to say that. I'm not concerned. I, I really think there's a lot of high skills here around this table and we, people do, do, they do do a good job. There's a couple of comments at the end here before the recommendation says future engagement will occur with the community when the working groups and all committees are established and future promotions of various working groups and committees, including calls, the community members will be available. We're moving in the right direction. And as long as we're moving forward, then that's a great thing. So, thank you.
Okay, I'll put that to the vote or? Leave to you, man, this is unanimously. Can have someone move item ten, please, the business unit reviews quarterly update, Alderman Cockshaw. Seconded by councillor Kendall.
Thank you, acting mayor. Um, getting a good update on some key, um, issues of the council, obviously with the Munna Art Centre. Um, we're seeing the business plan with great income to life, so some really good movement there. Particularly how we can better utilise that space. Obviously, it's been a big intake in social media, which is great to see in terms of marketing wise. Um, childcare, both centres are looking good towards a budget. Um, obviously get good update on through Hudson and the multicultural hub, so good proceedings are taking along nicely in the council.
Thank you. Any further discussions? Uh, to put that to you.
I totally, uh, support all those updates, what's proposed. Just take it back to, we had that discussion, it was the last meeting, uh, acting mayor. Um, we have got a backup plan, haven't we, for project, for project Hudson through this period, haven't we for, you know, we're, we're going, we're, we're going to this phase with, with the pays and whatever, there, there is a backup, isn't there?
Still with the old program in place.
Let's do it, as I say, there's the, um, the old fellow still there? Yeah, sorry.
We were actually running two pay rolls.
That's right. Okay, I, I, I saw the six there, so that's, I'm just looking at, to make sure we're covering, covering. I'll have that, ma'am.
Thank you. So Alder, oh, sorry, councillor Kendall.
Thank you. Yeah, I was curious about the, um, oh, and before I say this, I want to give a shout out to the Tulosa Park, um, on Gleno- Glenorkie on the Go group. I went there a month ago and it was such an amazing collection of people run by the very talented Willie on staff here at Glenorkie City Council. But it was mostly older, if I can say that, folks. It wasn't just a walking group, it was actually a swap meet, a plant swapping occasion. People were collecting bottle tops for the person who's collecting them and get along. So that's a plug for, um, Glenorkie on the Go Walking Group, which was mentioned in the, in the quarterly update. But, um, I was, my question was about housing, the housing working group. I was interested to know more and can elected members be involved in some way? Cause I'd love to help.
General manager.
Through you, ma'am. So the housing working group was, uh, is an internal staff. Through you, Mayor. So the housing working group was uh, is an internal staff um working group. It was established um uh to, to basically mon- monitor periodically our um uh ha- uh statement of commitment on housing. So council endorsed a statement of commitment on housing probably a couple of years ago. Um, more recently, in about the last twelve months, council updated that. Uh, and there are really three um, three streams of membership to this internal working group. The first, uh, the first is our community development, uh, people who work um in the social housing area. So they liaise with a, a lot of the so- social housing providers. Um, uh, we also have our property area because obviously um our, we, we have a um property disposals process where council um disposes of surplus um open space land and emphasize surplus land. Um, and uh, and essentially we, we take that to the market and we look for opportunities for that to be used for, for housing. And third, third is our, is our planning and development area where um this provides us with opportunity to, to monitor our approvals and how, how it's all going. Uh, we do bring, I'm trying to remember, but I think it's an annual report to council on our statement of commitment on housing and how um, how, how those um three areas are progressing, the issue of housing in the city.
I won't know them. All right then. Uh, any further debate?
I've just got a question, Mayor. Just relation to the twenty sixteen programme. Does it look like we would get ongoing funding?
To the director?
Um, at this stage, I think, like, remember at this stage, can we take that question and then we can get back to the other one?
Right. And just my other question is, is, I just get lost with how we've done all these. The community development section is part of the community unit, is that right? Is that, is that it? Okay. Well, sometime, for you, Mayor, can I, can I add some breakdown? I don't need no person's names. Just a breakdown of, of these, because I, I just thought that was all, all in community, but now as the community, not community, so. Thank you then.
So would you like to close debate, Alderman Cocksher?
Oh, good, thank you.
Yeah, fine. So we're only just receiving a noting. Um, so now we're moving on to eleven.
Oh, we've got a phone on, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, you're happy with that? Okay, so would you, um, yes, all those in favour say aye? Raise your hand up. Thank you. And me too. Uh, passed unanimously. We now move on to item eleven, Stormwater System Management Plan. Would anyone like to move this? Thank you, Alderman Alderton.
Give me a second, a second.
Second to stay, King. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Acting Mayor. First of all, I'd like to commend council officers on this Stormwater System Management Plan. It, it's a, it's a fairly comprehensive, detailed plan. It took quite a bit of reading. There's a lot of um detail in there regarding flood mapping and um other relevant information which gives us some strategies and some mechanisms along with some plans to reinforce our stormwater systems and to ultimately impact in resulting in um the loss and damage reduction in the event of any flooding in our community. So a very comprehensive and detailed reporting, indeed.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman King.
Just quickly now, I'd agree with Alderman Alderton and just thank the staff for work. They do a lot of this. This is the unseen work because it's all underground and we don't hear about problems until they happen. So incredible amount of work, incredibly well done. And I think the community should recognise the fact that this is, this is great work. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman.
Through you, Acting Mayor. Just a question uh around the management plan. And how often does it get reviewed? Obviously, you know, flood mapping can change in different rates, so it's fun to see how.
Through you.
To the director?
Um, every, every five years. However, when we have significant events, um, we do actually look at um what's caused the event, where's the um flow path, um, what's the impact basically? And we'll do a review at that time in that localised area. Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, so just coming in, obviously it's um, it's a, it's an extensive plan. Um, if you've got some time, take, take some time to have a look at it. Uh, it's, uh, you know, and individual catchments. Um, and emissions, obviously trying to reduce that, so uh, well done to the team on bringing it through.
Thank you. Any further conversation? Yes, thank you, councillor Kendall.
Thank you. Um, through you, Acting Mayor. Yeah, um, I just am gonna echo what um Russell said. Oh, sorry. Yaxley. Um, so what I'm excited about with this plan is that it, it takes into account um climate events and climate change and it will give us something to put into planning provisions that will restrict um developments and planning happening on floodplains or places that are prone to, to flood, uh, to flooding. So my question is just around the process of how that happens. So um, it says in the document that um we can provide regulations for modification to the state planning provisions of the state, of the Tasmanian planning scheme along with the, with assessing the extent of existing planning overlays within the study area. So basically, my question is, once we, now that we have this plan, can we plug this straight into um our development applications? Or does that need to be a recommendation that goes to the planning commission that then in time comes back to us and we can use?
To the director.
To the director?
Mayor, the um, the new um maps, pardon, I think, will be presented to the um state planning office so that they um are aware of the updated versions. Um, the overlays get updated um of where we might have um flooding issues. It, it may not restrict or, or prevent development, but there's certainly things that need to be done to make sure that um houses and properties protected from um some of the events. So, you know, that might mean the properties have to be built um well above the um known flood levels. Um, so it may restrict development in some areas, but it may still um enable development to go ahead under, you know, certain conditions. So, um, the overlays, we, we use overlays now, so the flood mapping overlays are available on our um website. Some people can see where they are. They, they will just be updated with all this new information.
So just to clarify, we can use those planning provisions straight away?
Um, may take a little while for the state planning office to adopt them, but um it shouldn't be too far away.
Thank you, councillor King.
Thank you, Mayor Chair. Uh, over the last couple of years, we've seen it firsthand uh some of the results of climate change. And uh I'd like to congratulate all those involved in Stormwater System Management Plan, especially Emilio and Patrick and the team. Because uh we all hope that it won't happen here, but it does with more frequency and more severity. And thankfully, we seem to be in the right place when it comes to real tragedies. But I think, well, don't think, I know it's essential that we do have a plan and that plan is freely available to people who live in flood-prone areas when it comes to deciding whether they're going to move in or not. And I notice in today's mainland papers that huge swathes of New South Wales and Queensland are now being given back to councils and hundreds of homes have been demolished. And these flood-prone areas are now green spaces that everybody can enjoy. And in the event of another downpour, uh, people are safe. Uh, and the river and rivers can flow in, in their natural way that was designed before we introduced concrete and subdivisions and changed the flow of lots of these areas. So uh, congratulations all round. Uh, it's probably not long overdue, but I think some of the things that have happened recently have given it a bit of an impetus. And uh, well done to everybody involved.
Thank you. If that's the end, uh, would you like to close debate?
Yes, yes. So, so I would just like to say that uh, from the comments going around the room, it only further enforces the uh, the benefit of the Stormwater System Management Plan and the benefits it's going to bring to our community in regards to uh flood, levels of flood reduction and uh loss and damage to personal and both public property infrastructure.
I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour, raise your hands. Courage unanimously. Now, we move on to item twelve, public meeting and reopen the Glanorki War Memorial Pool. Who would like to move this one?
I'll move a good point in discussion, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you, councillor Kendall. Um, I just misplaced my.
Thank you. Something you wanted to go through.
Yes, I just misplaced it.
This one.
So, um, this is very complex because there were so many. And I believe the council's approach for this is to break it up into motions of consistency. So I, um, and this means we're trying to make it less messy and less protracted, but still deal with it in an open and transparent manner. But please bear with us. The first motion, um, and these will all fa- fall under um leaving this, the, the master motion. First motion is that the recommendations be dealt with in the following groupings, one to three, four to seven. Or do you wish to deal with them as they come up?
Well, what we were, I think there, just to go through how they're grouped and then uh, then we could work through them from, from there.
So we're going to do the main groups of one to three, four to seven, eight and nine together, ten and eleven together, twelve and thirteen together, fourteen and fifteen together, sixteen to eighteen, nineteen to twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four to twenty-five. And it does say here that I will need a mover and a second for each grouping. So let's go to the first.
Mayor, can I ask if you read out each motion in the grouping, group side? When we, when we do them in groups, can you read out each motion, please, in those groups before we move and second?
Yes, I'll just check with the general manager. It's a few ones?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so the first ones, which are one to three, is that we receive and note the summary of submissions received in relation to the public meeting held in relation to the Glanorki War Memorial Pool on the twenty-seventh of March two thousand and twenty-four, known as the public meeting at attachment one. Two, receive and note the questions received in advance of the public meeting and the answers provided to those questions at attachment three. And three, receive and note the minutes of the public meeting at attachment five. Now, I'm going to need a mover for that. Thank you, Alderman Dunston, and a second please. Thank you, councillor Kendall. Any discussion? No, no discussion. So move back to Alderman Dunston. Fine, thank you. So we move those. All that in favour, so aye? Or raise your hand. Every procedure is different.
Listen.
Yes. Uh, councillor King, uh, Ken, sorry, councillor Quick, are you in agreement or not?
Uh, which one? Sorry.
It says items one to three.
Item.
One to three, the ones on the, on the board.
Well, when it comes to motion two, does coun- council workshops be open to observation? No, no, I'm sorry.
Um, can I just ask councillor Kendall, can you have a?
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
You are, thank you. So I'll just do that again. Everyone in favour, raise your hand. It's moved unanimously. Now we're moving on to items four to seven, and I'll read those. Receive and note motion one, put by Janice Bryan and passed by a majority of participants present at the public meeting, that the council, A, make the immediate repair of the pool site the major priority. B, commit to immediately research, research and produce quality submissions for the state and federal funding for an upgraded public supporting facility at the current Anfield Street site. And C, immediately apply to the state government for the promise of five million dollars fi- funding to urgently commence repairs to the pool. And D, commit to providing regular monthly reports on this project at council meetings. Five, reiterate council's resolution on twenty-sixth of February two thousand and twenty-four, namely, in light of the bipartisan election commitments of five million dollars, direct the general manager to identify priority works required and start planning to safely repair and reopen the Glanorki War Memorial Pool while long-term solutions are being explored. Six, note that the current MI global project will involve the preparation of a detailed business case for the future of Anfield Street site, informed by community engagement. Seven, note that a letter signed by all elected members was sent to the state premier and minister for sports and events on the twenty-third of April two thousand and twenty-four, seeking confirmation of the timing and the funding date. So that's items four to seven. I need a mover? Thank you, Alderman Cocksher. And I need a second. Uh, thank you very much, Alderman Alderton. And do we have any discussion? No. So, uh, Alderman Cocksher, do you have anything to finish debate?
Nothing to add at all, we've said already.
Thank you. Then those in favour, raise your hand. Moved unanimously. Now move on to items eight and nine. And eight is receive and note motion two, put by Nicole Bout and passed by a majority of participants present at the public meeting, that the council, A, make all council workshops open to the community and rate payers for observation. Nine, maintain the current practice of holding council workshops closed to the public. Um, can I have a mover for that, please?
Can we group, have we grouped those two?
I'm just, that's a question and answer, general manager, not a group. I think that's a question and answer, isn't it? Eight, eight and nine is, nine is the answer.
Not the answer to eight.
So, through you, Acting Mayor. So the, the way that we've set up the um officer recommendation is that we have the individual um uh resolution from the public meeting, and that's item eight. And then following that, we have, um, we have a, a, I guess, a response, um, a recommendation for the council to consider.
So just a question for me. So that's the question and we're accepting the answer, is that what we're saying?
That's correct.
Correct, thank you.
If I, if I can just add a point here, my understanding is that
I don't have a mover.
Motion nine regards to the concrete analysis of the pool. So you're grouping together. If, if I'm correctly, we're grouping together.
Nine's the answer. Not nine, you're, nine is the answer to question. And which is question eight, but it's.
My understanding is we're grouping motions eight and nine together, correct?
Through you, Acting Mayor. It's the um, the original, the, the numbers refer to the original recommendation that's in the council agenda. So the numbering, we're following the numbering in the, the officer's report.
Oh, right, okay.
Recommendation.
Thank you.
All right, so I need a mover and a second before further debate. Thank you, Alderman King, uh, yes, Alderman King and Alderman Yaxley. All right, now would anyone like to talk on this?
I think that, that, can we just have that answer again, please, just to make sure?
Well, it was received, oh, you got the answer or the question? I'll, I'll give you the question first, which was receive and note motion two by Nicole Bout and passed by a majority of participants present at the public meeting. At the council, make all council workshops open to the community and rate payers for observation. And nine is maintain the current practice of holding council workshops closed to the public. So it would be good to have better explanation why we do that.
The reason, my understanding is we, we keep most of these closed as often confidential matters discussed, finance matters that are in confidence. And uh, again, they're training meetings for us. They're not, as is mentioned, not meetings of council as such and meetings that we don't have to attend. So uh, I think the process has worked for the many years that I've been on council. I wouldn't say I'm sure to concur on that.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering, Mayor, whether or not, sorry, general manager, we're not just long, I totally support the recommendation. Sure we had someone on there for reasons of confidentiality or um in com- uh, um, commercial nature. I just think it needs something else after, hopefully, that's all.
Commercially confident.
Just need something else.
General Manager.
Through you, Acting Mayor. Would it be helpful if I just read the um officer advice in the con- in the body of the report? Um, generally, council workshop materials are prepared for the purpose Um, generally, council workshop materials are prepared for the purpose of briefing elected members and generating discussion that serves as background on matters coming to a council meeting for decision. Workshops are not decision-making forums and are not a meeting of council as defined in the Local Government Act nineteen ninety-three. Workshops are not compulsory and are not governed by the same requirements which apply to council meetings. In the majority of cases, input to workshop graphics become, become attachments to or text within a published council meeting agenda.
Well, can we, eh, just, I, I understand that, uh, for you, general manager, can we just have an asterisk perhaps after the workshops, so we draw our attention to that section? Can we do that or not?
Um, if Alderman King is accepting that, is it a motion?
I'm happy.
And the second, eh?
Simply putting, sorry, across.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying for you, uh, acting mayor to the general manager, I, I, it's very clear, but if you didn't, if you didn't have that other information, it would, it would send a little bit, I'm just saying, had, had an asterisk after workshops that, that alerted to that point, oh, it's all done, that's all.
Yes, um, is it? Would it be, well, so what we would do, um, through you acting mayor is basically, uh, import the relevant, um, text into the, into the old.
Okay.
Uh, resolution.
Yes.
Um, I wonder whether we, um, maintain the current practice of holding council workshops closed to the public, I wonder if we could summarise it, um, because they provide.
Yes.
An, an opportunity for elected members to be briefed and, uh, and to consider, um.
Spot on.
Information going to future council, um, meetings in a non-decision-making environment.
That's it.
Yep.
I'm happy.
Uh, do we need another movement? Do you want to move an amendment?
I, I'm, I'm not, I mean, the information's already there. So, for mine is that the information's there, we don't have, I'm not sure we have to repeat it, but if we have to repeat it, I'm happy to, to, to make that happen, but, look, the information's there.
There is. Uh, through you acting mayor, I wonder where the halfway house is, picking up the asterisk idea. Maintain the current practice of holding council workshops closed to the public, um, and, and as explained in the body of this report.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so we don't need a motion for amendment, good.
We just want people to have something to refer to, so I understand.
So any further discussion on those items, which is eight and nine? Thank you, councillor Kendall.
Thank you, acting mayor, yeah, I'd love to talk on this one, it's a really interesting concept of opening up the workshops to the public and, uh, obviously there's a real desire from the public there to know what goes on at, at workshops and, um, there's a lot of suspicion in the community now, which is leading people to want to know even more. When I came onto council, I didn't get it and all I could figure out was that elected members didn't want to look stupid by asking stupid questions of the, of the officers and maybe there's a little bit of an element of that, but, and so from my perspective, I was like, I'm happy to ask stupid questions, let's just make them open, everyone's on me and they can get a sense of what we're talking about. And they're not, uh, decision-making forums and that's often said in workshops, it's purely to get the information that you're going to have to make a decision on in one or three months' time. Um, so now I sort of understand it more because in discussions in workshops, it is often the chance for elected members to ask kind of pointy questions of management or to say this isn't good enough or have you considered this? And for that not to be, to sort of impact the cohesion and the relationship, I guess, of council between the strategic arm, the elected members, and the operational arm, the management of council. So I kind of get it more now, so I'm, yeah, hopefully that explanation helps, but I think as elected members, we can just, we can just do the best that we can to make things public when they're able to be, so if there is a forum where we can bring in the community, um, and show them what's going on in workshops, then I'm, I'd be open to that, but I understand it more now, I'm very happy to support this motion. Hopefully that extra information helps someone.
Thank you, Alder- Alderton.
Okay, in all of the conversation around the table, ma'am, I'm just wondering if there is any value with us maybe having a workshop and discussing maybe having an open day at one of our council workshops? Now, uh, look, an ideal way to maybe do this is when we have a structured workshop around maybe where someone likes sparking conversations, comes out and talks to us, or Inspector Simmons comes out and talks to us about the crime in, in the city, I mean, they're, they're more sort of information briefings we get at, at, at the odd occasional workshop. Maybe we could consider just having a open day, one single open day workshop and let the community have an insight into that side of council. It might satisfy, satisfy and improve people's curiosity.
And, and help share that information.
And help share the information as well.
One question for that, ma'am, if I may, is would, would that mean that the community would have input into those workshops, would they just have to sit there quietly or would they be able to ask questions? Or where do we draw the line?
I think on something like sparking, sparking conversations, which is about fire management, they should be able to ask questions.
So we had a sparking information thing at the Murder Arts Centre, which I chaired, and we had people from the Heritage Council, and people came along to the community and participated in that. That's a sort of open style workshop that community can attend if we want to have something that's open to the public. I think we can pick those things and make them open by going to somewhere like the Murder Arts Centre. Anyway, correct, talking out of order.
Exactly, thank you. So, Alderman King, um, you should have to close your hand.
Think of councillor Quick, just wanted to say something.
Alderman, Alderman, your idea sounds good in theory and perhaps we might trial it. But my big concern is the only people who'll turn up to these are the usual suspects running their own agenda.
Well, thank you. So, so, Alderman King, would you like to close the debate?
Very grateful, the input of everyone again, and particularly councillor Kendall, thank you. I, I love the past and new together, voting together, so thank you for that. I think we understand where we're going, so I'm happy to move on.
Thank you, so I'm putting that motion to the vote, all those in favour, raise your hand. Passed unanimously, thank you. Next one is item ten and eleven, and I think this is a bit of the same theme here. So, item ten is the motion three put by Leanne Rose, so it's been suggested that we receive a note of motion three put by Leanne Rose and passed by a majority of participants present at the public meeting, that, A, immediately after MI Global submit their recommendation, lobby the state government for funding for a state-of-the-art facility to be run and managed by a management team with wisdom to make the pool more viable. And item eleven is that we continue to focus on completing the MI Global study into the long-term future of the pool site and consider advocacy options to most effectively promote the funding of a new facility. I need someone to move this, thank you, Alderman Cockshack, and who will second it? Thank you, Alderman Slide. Any discussion?
I think we're already aligned on what's been proposed, so I would say no, nothing further.
Thank you, anyone else? No?
I just, one, you know, wisdom, that's a pretty broad term. I'll be interested to see how we choose, could wisdom compare to intelligence? I do know there was a good quote on wisdom, that intelligence was knowing that a tomato is a fruit and wisdom is knowing not to put in a fruit salad, so maybe, maybe we could work around that.
Thank you very much for that conjugation, very enlightening. Um, I'm putting that motion to the vote, all those in favour, raise your hand. And it's passed unanimously. Right. So now we're on items twelve and thirteen. And twelve is to receive a note, motion four, put by Leanne Rose on behalf of Bradley McDougall and passed by.
Just a point, can you, can you put a motion on behalf of someone else?
It was accepted on the night.
May be.
Just receiving and noting.
Yeah, just for receiving and noting. Uh, by Leanne Rose on behalf of Bradley McDougall and passed by a majority of participants present at the public meeting, that, A, require elected members intending to nominate for positions outside of their council position will not prepare on council time and B, require elected members nominated for political positions outside their council position to resign their current position in its entirety before nominating. And the back part to that is that we note that the propositions in the motion for are legislative matters for the Tasmanian Parliament. So, nobody's broken any laws. So can I have someone move that? Thank you, councillor Kendall. And a second, eh?
I'll say.
Thank you, Alderman Slide. Any debate?
Well, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder- Alderton, Alderman.
Oh, no, I haven't finished, sorry.
Oh, sorry, you first.
No, well, you've got to play that, that legislative matters for Tasmanian Parliament, but also that, uh, there was nothing, nothing breached, there's not, there's no, there's, you know what I'm saying, I mean, apart from the fact that there's no, really there's no legislative breach. Not just legislative matter, sorry. I'm happy with that, that's all, I just want to stress that, that's all.
Through you, acting mayor, um, I, yes, I think the, the, possibly the intent of the question was to refer obliquely or imply something.
Okay.
Um, but it doesn't openly.
Okay.
Do so, so we, we, we felt that it was sufficient to.
I'm happy with that, eh?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so on that note, there's no further debate.
I was only, I was only just going to point out, acting ma- acting mayor, but I'll be voting against this motion because by voting for it, we are actually in, in breach of legislative matters.
That's a question, I'm asking a question, are we in breach? If not, then I'm okay to vote for it, but if we're not, if we are, I wouldn't have thought you'd put it to us as a breach.
Through you acting mayor, so my understanding of the provisions of the Local Government Act is that, um, uh, it, it, that a, um, an elected member of the council is perfectly entitled to stand for higher office, uh, and, uh, by the operation of the act, um, if they are declared elected, then, uh, they vacate the office, uh, of elected member by, by, um, operation of the legislation. So, um, in, in another situation where, um, I think we had recently had an example, I'm not naming names, of a legislative councillor who, um, was quitting the, uh, the legislative council to go to the lower house, um, that, that person was required to, um, to resign their office. Um, that would be as a result of the provisions, the, the legislation applying to that level of government. In this level of government, there isn't a requirement, it's perfectly legitimate under the existing legislation for someone to stand for office and then not, uh, resign their office until such time as they're actually declared elected.
That's a really good explanation, I appreciate that, but just going back to Alderman Alderton's.
If I could just ask a question, if you'd go for that?
I'm just asking a question.
No, no, he was, eh?
Was he? Okay, I thought I still had my question.
I was just on your question, I can.
Because the general manager was just answering my question, I thought I was still.
So my, my understanding.
I'm just going to give the floor to councillor King.
So based on that. It's all right, based on that, that, as I say, it's a great explanation, but based on what Alderman Alderton's saying, are we any sort of breach by accepting this motion, that's the question? No, no, so then, then we can accept, that's, that's my, that's my.
We're simply receiving and noting the resolution was mastered.
That's right, that's why I wanted to clarify that.
Just through you, ma'am, my understanding, if we vote and support the motion to force somebody to resign because they're running for another office, we are in breach of the legislative act. We open ourselves up to litigation by forcing somebody to resign from a council position to run for state parliament, so on those grounds, I can't see why we can at all support this motion, that's why.
I think the dilemma is we just do not have the power to do that. Not within our valley wing, so we could, we could vote it down.
Which would be a sensible thing.
Through you acting mayor, I think we're just across purposes, I think we're actually all agreeing, uh, we're all agreeing with each other, we just have a, so, so the situation is the current legislation allows for a person to, um, stand for office if they're elected member, they can stand for, um, state or federal government and, and without needing to resign. Um, um, obviously they, they should not be using their automatic or elected member resources in, in their campaign. But, um, but, but we, we're, I guess, in fierce agreement that, that the legislation doesn't require, um, what, what is being proposed here. All we're doing is simply receiving and noting that, that, um, resolution from the public meeting, we're not agreeing with it, well, the officer recommendation is, is simply to say, we, um, that, that this is a matter of the state parliament, we, the legislation allows it at the moment. Um, us, us, us acknowledging that it's a matter of the state parliament, that won't, won't require anyone to, uh, step down because the current situation is that, um, um, the, the person that's being alluded to, um, is not doing anything wrong in terms of the current legislation.
Well, acknowledging that, uh, general manager, I think it's far better to vote the motion down.
Thank you, Alderman Slide.
Uh, acting mayor, I've read it simply, you're going to read these slowly, especially when you've got the bit from the start. I'm, I'm looking at the factors that, just take that lady, on behalf of somebody, put a motion, there is the motion, and there is the response from, um, authorized person within the council. I have moved it second, which means I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote for it because A and B was correct and number thirteen is correct. So I'm reading it right, general manager, tell me, the action.
No, not A and B.
So, through, through you acting mayor, so the, uh, A and B.
That's right, correct, uh, correct, correct what the person was saying.
Yes, correct, that's right.
And simply, third, that's, so what I'm saying, I've started, I've started again, my shopping job is, A and B is, is, is just phrasing what the, what was put. And thirteen is, is phrasing what the officer or yourself has put in response, correct? Thank God for that.
Through you acting mayor, so, so A and B would require a change to the legislation.
Yes.
Uh, and we're saying.
Yeah.
It's a matter for the state parliament, not for.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so is there any further conversation on this, any further debate? Um, I'm sorry, general manager, uh, this one was moved by councillor Kendall. You have to close the debate?
Um, no, just to say that this resolution is asking us to vote for or against the officer recommendation. Yep, happy to put it to the vote. Does that clarify it?
Sorry.
No, not.
Clear as mud.
Okay. And we're saying the officer recommend, the officer recommendation was that we don't have the power to win that decision.
But that's not what actually matters, the legislative matters for Tasmanian Parliament. Now, are we all clear on this matter?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to put the, the, uh, motion to the vote, all those in favour, raise your hand.
Nothing to close it, is it?
Yes, I just have it to counter.
Oh, sorry, I forgot.
Right, so is, not unanimous, those against?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, which is a negative.
Yeah, that's right.
Awesome, okay. Right, so now let's move on to fourteen and fifteen. Receive and note motion five put by Sally Hiller passed by a majority of participants present at the public meeting that the council. Ready? Be upfront and honest about the minimum amount of works required to open the pool, including the cost for the minimum viable repairs and the timeframe for the works. Fifteen is continue to provide timely and relevant information to the community about the works required to open the pool, including costs and timeframe for the works. So in other words, we're already doing it. Thank you, um, you'll move it, will you, Alderman Cockshack?
I'll move it.
Thank you, and Alderman Dunstall, you will say?
No, no further debate for me.
No further debate from anyone else?
Oh, I've just, I've.
Okay, one at a time, please.
My only thing is that there's some big words here. Uh, words like cost and timeframe, right, for the works, which, which I haven't seen.
Yeah, but it is saying that we continue to provide it as we get it in a timely and relevant information to the community, so just since we're already doing it.
Okay, I've got you now, that's, uh, very hard to read these officers, yes, comma, including the cost timeframe, yes, I'm happy now.
Okay, so no further discussion?
I'm just going to say that I believe our, our staff are upfront and honest. Yeah, and I, I don't like them being questioned like that, so anyway, that's my comment.
No.
Always ask questions.
No, in the, not you, no, I'm talking about the, the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Honesty about the minimum amount of works.
Okay, I, I think we're moving into some muddy territory there, so let's put this to the. So let's put this to the vote. And all those in favour, raise your right hand, left hand, whatever you want. Thank you, everyone's in favour. They're passed. And we're moving on to sixteen and seventeen and eighteen. Receive and note motion six, put by Marla Crewe and passed by a majority of participants present at a public meeting at the council, A, maintain our facilities responsibly using Tasmanian contractors and B, instigate sustainable options for the future of the pool. And seventeen is note that while, so this is the answer from council, note that while the council's code for tenderers and contracts supports Tasmanian businesses to enhance capabilities of local business and industry, procurement provisions must consider other criteria such as price, experience and capability. And eighteen, again from us, is note that the MI Global Project Brief includes consideration of sustainable options in both pool repair works and any longer term redevelopment of the site. Who would like to move this? Thank you, Alderman Dunsby. And who will second it? Thank you, councillor Kendall. I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yes, I don't believe so. I don't have anything to add to the discussion around that one.
Anyone else like to debate anything? No? And I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour, raise your hand. Now, nineteen to twenty-two, we're getting the hang of this now. Receive and note motion seven, put by Lisa Rhyme and passed by a majority of participants present at the public meeting at the council. A, does not hold any meetings about the pool in secret or any closed meetings regarding the pool. And B, does not hold any meetings about the pool where certain councillors or Alderman are not included. All right, twenty, this is our answer. Note that all council meetings to date involving the Glenorkie Pool have been held in open council with the exception of the selection of the successful tenderer for the pool redevelopment and alternative options project, which was appropriately held in closed council. And then item twenty is further explanation. Continue to conduct council meetings and workshops with appropriate governance, including compliance with Regulation 15 and the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations 2015, which governs the conduct of closed meetings. And another comment, note that all elected members are invited to each and every council meeting and council workshop. So do I have somebody to move those? Alderman Cockshir, thank you. And Alderman Yaxley can second them. Any discussion?
Um, no.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No. Yay. Let's vote on those, I'll put that to motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye or raise your hand. Approved unanimously. Now, we have item twenty-three, which is to receive and note motion eight, put by Nicole Bout and passed by the majority of participants present at the public meeting, that attendees at this public meeting have no confidence in this council. That's a standalone one. Wonder what? Do I have anyone to move it?
I'd like to delete the word note. Just receive motion eight. Why should we note something when people have no confidence in this?
Well, the other option is...
Let's receive it, put it on the shelf and forget about it.
Okay, so in that case...
Why should we note it?
Well, if we don't move it, we don't accept it.
Well...
Through you, acting mayor, so the...
I mean, it's out there in the general ether and not on the public record. Let's receive it.
It could lapse. It could lapse.
It could lapse? Are we going to have a vote on it?
Not if we lap it.
No, there's no mover or seconder.
There's no mover or seconder.
Let's have a vote on twenty-three.
That's all we're discussing. So is there any appetite to move item twenty-three? No, I don't hear none, so therefore that motion lapses. Move on to item twenty-four and twenty-five. Receive a note, motion nine, put by Denise Bryan and passed by a majority of participants present at the public meeting, that council complete concrete analysis ASAP to determine the life expectancy of the pool. Twenty-five, based on the expert advice, this is our answer, consider the need and benefit of concrete testing once the full scope of the pool repair remediation works are known in accordance with the recent advice from Lacus Consulting, received 8th of April 2024. Thank you, Alderman Cockshir. Do I have a second, huh? Thank you, councillor Kendall. Any discussion?
All I would say is that council says we'll vote by expert opinions and feedback of any advice regarding the pool, which will come to us for approval at council meetings. So any decisions made with the pool is done with careful considerations by the experts.
Okay, any further conversations, debate? No? So I put those motions. All those in favour, raise your hand. Carried unanimously. And let her know, I think we've got through that. Too much bloodshed. We now move on to item thirteen, the quarterly report for quarter three, period ending 31st of March 2024. Who would like to move this motion? Please?
Can we let this go lips? Oh, I'll come on.
Ah, there you go. Actually, I just saw Alderman Dunsby shand it with a quarter of my eye, so she just spat it on Alderman Cockshir. That's the one, the Alderman Cockshir.
Alderman Dunsby? Thank you, the quarterly report is a very comprehensive document. I look forward to reading each quarter and seeing the progress that we're making. I believe it's fairly self-explanatory. People might think it's a boring document, but anybody from members of the public did have a read of it, they would certainly see all the actions and indicators that are happening within council and see that we are getting quite a few things coming through, some really positive projects. And I threw open now for discussion with my fellow colleagues.
Anyone else like to add to the conversation? No? So then I'm going to put that motion, unless you want to close it.
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, all those in favour, raise your hand. Thank you, unanimous, that's carried. Item fourteen, private works policy. Thank you, Alderman King, and thank you, Alderman Cockshir.
No, no, Alderman Slade.
Oh, Slade, was it?
Yeah.
Yes, Slade, that was it.
In before you.
Yeah.
Slade, sorry. Okay, just conversation from you, please. Alderman King?
Slade.
Oh, Slade was first.
Yes.
Oh, I'm being punished, Slade and Cockshir.
Yeah, yeah. You're much quicker than me.
Yep.
You ready? Sorry, mate, yeah. Yeah, I think this is a good policy. It spells out the reason why council perhaps wouldn't be involved in this process, honestly, of private works. And then, of course, it goes on and says, private works, there's an opportunity that can be applied to the general manager. And it just highlights again other things that you, obviously, you're trying to alleviate, which causes things like conflicts of interest. So I think it's a very straightforward policy. Then it's good practice. It's something which, obviously, the Tasmanian Audit Office want. And that's fair enough, gives us better credibility and all these sort of things and this day. And I support the policy, as is nicely created by staff.
Thank you. Any further debate? Thank you, councillor Kendall.
Yeah, thank you, acting officer policy as well. Yeah, my question was, and just the background, as Alderman King has just said, it's just come from the Tasmanian Audit Office recommending that we have some transparency around private works. And private works aren't really current practice, but yeah, we've got a policy in case that happens, to put parameters around it. But my question was about the Tasmanian Audit Office. Do they ask councils across the board for this, or was this special, unique to God?
General manager? Through you, acting mayor. So by understanding, and I believe that this was a kind of a sector-wide, so I think they call them special purpose orders. So generally, I guess the bulk of the work that the Tas Audit Office does is just overseeing the financial statements of each of the individual councils, but they also have a work programme where they identify, they might identify patterns or issues that come up across the sector. And they will do one or two of those, I think probably generally one or two each year, where they're looking at things across local government or even across state government as well. So that's what's happened in this situation. And the reality is, in practice, we don't undertake private works as a matter of course, or allow them, but we do have situations where it could theoretically arise, so it makes sense to have a policy in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? Alderman Slade, do you like to close the debate?
Yeah, I'm happy with it.
Okay, thank you. I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Item fifteen, procurement and contract exemptions report. Would someone like to move that? Thank you, Alderman Dunsby. And the second is councillor, sorry, Alderman King.
Thank you. Again, this one, I believe, is self-explanatory. The reason for the report coming to council is explained there in terms of the engagement of the purchaser and the amount has been listed, so I believe it's very straightforward, it's not...
I think there just needs to be, there's a typo there. Oh, it's been fixed there, but on mine, it was a weed killer unit. It's a weed killer unit, thank you. So Alderman Dunsby explained that. Anyone wish to comment? No? Alderman Dunsby, you'd like to close the debate? No, thank you. Good. Okay, I'll put that to the motion. Do we note that?
Yes, we do.
All those in favour? It's carried unanimously. We have item sixteen, acting general manager arrangements, and the director will leave the room.
I'm leaving.
Thank you. Alderman King? Thank you, Alderman Cockshir. So would you like to lead the way?
Thank you. I think on the general manager's part, this is a really good decision to have a clear delineation, a clear direction of, if he's away for any reason, that someone can readily, constantly step in a position. And we know Mr Rialy really well, we can work with him, and I think it's self-explanatory. It just makes a lot of sense to me. It's not going to cost anymore, it looks like, unless you really negotiate something.
That question, yes, the general manager. So should for some reason both the general manager and this person appointed to the position as general manager not be available, is there a fallback for the arrangements? You think, going back to how you previously would select another staff member?
Through you, mayor. In practice, the legislation actually says that this decision arrives to every absence of a general manager. That's the wording in the act. But in practice, you know, if we had a situation where, let's say, the general manager and the nominated acting general manager were both absent, then clearly we would revert to the prior practice, which is to bring a recommendation to the mayor for another director to fill in as acting general manager.
And subsequent questions? So should personally you've appointed, leave the board of council, there'd be another recommendation potentially to come back to council at that point? Is it just laps?
Well, effectively, it would go with the, it's a personal recommendation, so it's going with the person. So if that person left the organisation, then we're back to, probably back to the current practice now. And it's, you know, one of the, I think we discussed this, you know, in a really council workshop, and we talked about the pros and cons, and it really depends on the makeup of the executive leadership and council's position around that. So if you've got a situation where you've got, a situation where you've got two directors that are in the development, you know, have got capacity for development in acting in the role, potentially you can look at reverting to the current practice. I think it's a, I guess what I'm saying is horses for courses. But certainly, if Mr Rialy was to leave the organisation, then we'd be effectively, that'd be the end of this arrangement, personally to that person.
He's not allowed to leave anyway, but I just wanted to clarify those points. Thank you. Why would you want to? That's right.
Yes, thank you, Alderman.
Look, I just want to make a comment here, acting mayor. All the ones I've seen like this in my corporate life have been framed, but they've been framed on to the term of the general manager's contract. Now, the only reason I'm saying that is that this is out of plum. The fact is that, I don't know, the general manager may not go for another contract at this organisation, and then another person comes in and may have a new set of ideas, and he's stuck with this. So what I'm saying is, I think it's a bit harsh. And I'm not, look, general manager, I'm not saying here what, I just think it's been harsh on the future of this organisation, which should be strategic thinkers. I've never seen one like this. It's normally to the contract period of the general manager, and it just rolls over. I just want to raise that because I feel more comfortable with that rather than the way it's written at present moment.
Through you, mayor. So the reason for this, the recommendation for five years is simply because the act provides for a maximum of a five-year arrangement to be approved by council. In the event, talking hypothetically here, but in the event that we finish the contract, then Mr Rialy would move into the acting general manager role. But it doesn't then give him the guns of general manager. The council would still need to go through an appropriate merit-based recruitment process.
What it is, is that it's putting me in position of acting general manager for that period when the new general manager coming in, or the council could be in such turmoil or whatever, that they want to do a different style of management structure. That's, I'm just trying to get everybody to think strategically around the table.
And if I'm a person, I think Hobart saw that, but so sometimes having a bit of consistency of direction and someone to guide someone through.
But that's one side to it. Look, I'm happy to go with this, but I'm just saying that the reason I raised it, it's not, I haven't seen one like this, that's all. That's all.
Yeah, how do you go through it?
I agree with Alderman Slade. I mean, I'd like to see after general manager for the remainder of the general manager's term pursuant to...
Yeah.
So I'm not too sure how long the general manager's got, but if it's... No, no, I mean that, that's one. You know, if you have four years to go and we're putting you a five-year term on, I think it doesn't make sense. So, you know, as I said, after the general manager for the remainder of his term pursuant to subsection of the Government Act.
General manager, kind of, but this would still be subject to performance review and things like that?
Correct, acting mayor. So it might be, well, if it's the will of the council, my contract ends on the 30th of June 2025. So we provide just a one-term arrangement, one year, effectively a one-year arrangement.
My point, I'm going to have another go. Sorry, my point is that it's a contractual arrangement as for that position, the position, the actual doing his assessment, whatever, the contractual arrangement would override that. So that's, all I'm trying to do here is best practice. We know that things can just get twisted in your hand with twelve months, two years of an organisation. I'm trying to look strategically, not operationally, and I'm just, I'm putting it on the table.
So then I'll ask a follow-up question. When you appoint someone in any senior position, it's for a five-year term?
Generally, generally, the, well, changes to the Fair Work Act have come in and I can't pretend to explain them in detail, but effectively, people at director level can be appointed on a five-year contract. Changes to the Fair Work Act now suggest that people below a certain remuneration threshold must be, are effectively permanent. So potentially, depending on where our managers are different, remuneration levels, and some may be above or below that fair work threshold. I can't remember the number off the top of my head. Um, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but, uh, yes, for, for directors, we generally appoint them with a five-year contract.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. Just a question regarding the, um, so I appreciate Alderman Slade's saying, if, at the end of that contract, that, um, the director, um, Mr Rialy will then take hold, basically run the ship effectively while we're in search of finding one? Or we, would that be the case? Or are we looking prior to that to then be a seamless transition for the general manager?
Uh, so there are requirements in, uh, I'm trying to, in fact now, but, um, there are, from off the top of my head, I think it's a six-months notice period. So I need to provide council with, um, notice as to whether or not, uh, six months out, whether or not, so basically first of January, um, uh, twenty twenty-five, whether I'm seeking reappointment for another term. Uh, that then provides, um, that there's a, then a process council then considers, if, if I said yes, then council considers whether they want to advertise from there. If, obviously, if I say no, I'm not seeking reappointment, then, um, it's, it's an easy process for the council. Uh, and, uh, you know, effectively, depending on when that starts, I mean, we had a situation recently at, um, Kinsborough Council where, um, the, the, um, the general manager provided advanced notice. The council went through its recruit, merit-based recruitment process for the new, uh, general manager, um, and the, it basically dovetailed in pretty well, so that the, the, uh, the old general manager provided a one-week, um, handover for the incoming person. So those sorts of arrangements, you know, depending on timing, they, they can be put in place. Um, it, it's effectively, you know, a situation where, um, in the event, um, in the event that, um, I'm absent, then, um, it's effectively an automatic acting GM situation. But, um, it certainly does not, uh, feta council from, um, going through its merit-based, uh, recruitment process to, to, um, select a new general manager. But I acknowledge there's always a kind of a, um, a, a level of advantage if, um, you, if you, if you're operating in a role and operating satisfactorily, then, um, that, that provides a level of assurance to decision-makers, but it doesn't, um, by, does by no means guarantee, um, the outcome of a merit-based process.
And just a second one, just regarding the five-year, the five-year term, if we change that to, um, contract length or whatever we change it to, is that then pursuant to the, does that then relate to that government, that, that act, that, that section?
Uh, there's, I haven't got the, I could probably bring it up, I'd probably quoted it in the, um, in the report, but essentially it says, um, works to the effect of council can appoint, um, a person to act, um, during every absence of the, uh, general manager, uh, for a period of up to five years. So I've just, I've just adopted the maximum on the basis that it, it's a more efficient arrangement. Um, it's, it certainly counts as questions to, um, vary that time.
I'm sorry for the gallant general manager, um, and for you, acting mayor, but wouldn't a general manager, we're always, always very strong as council about keeping out of general managers' area, generally do one appointment. So no, it's a general manager, so it's the rest of them. Wouldn't, wouldn't, isn't it more suitable that a general manager has the ability to be able to choose who they have working under them, rather than carry something that's, uh, a longer period, and they may have different views? I, I can't stress it enough, that, that could happen.
Through you, is it, could I just check? Uh, so I guess, um, the situation would be, um, if there's an absence...
As if you've gone, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're addressing conversation. If, um, so if, if the general manager's absent, then there's a, if, if you like, a standing arrangement for, um, there wouldn't, I'm talking in hypothetical terms, for the nominated person to step in to the role of act, act as general manager. Um, however, if a new, um, uh, if a new, uh, general manager is appointed on a merits basis, basis, um, and it's not the nominated person, um, which is entirely possible, um, then the nominated person then works to the, the new general manager, um, as a director, and that's just the normal... So this isn't affecting, this isn't affecting the contractual arrangements of, of our directors. It's, it's affecting, it's just an arrangement, and it's a, it's a, it's not something I can, uh, it, it's something that's required to be a council decision of the act.
Yes. And also, I think that it would be very strange that, um, that this person has been offered this position on a five-year term, so the general manager is seeking endorsement of his decision. And we all know this person to be outstanding, I think, in every way. Um, so I think it would be kind of disappointing to have that challenge to a change. And we also have to remember that even general managers get hold in council. Uh, you know, there's the change, so sometimes having that consistency level of carrying through, particularly like in the Hobart example, where the general manager came and had no knowledge of Hobart whatsoever. I didn't know any streets or anything else, so to have a, a deputy that was consistent was a pretty vital thing. So, um, I will be supporting this, but I'm just going to suggest we wind it up, if that's okay.
Mayor, I'll just raise some issues.
Yep.
I'll stand by the fact that I believe that's strategic issues, not operational, and I'll go with the motion, but, okay.
Yeah, no, thank you for raising, because I think our governance should always be under scrutiny and checked by all of us. So, any further discussion? Okay. So I'll ask Alderman King. Want to note? Again?
No, it was you, wasn't it? No.
I've, I've written down...
It wasn't me, sorry?
Yes.
Oh, my apologies.
Sending me around the bend tonight. Okay, the debate's closed.
You're always saying...
No. The motion, I'm putting the motion, all those in favour, raise your hand. Thank you, unanimous decision. Now we move on to item seventeen, notices of motions, questions on notice or without notice, but we have it on notice from Alderman Dunsky. Do you want to read it, Alderman?
Uh, I think that the question there and the response is, is available to everybody. I would like to ask a subsequent question around this one, if I may. Um, in some of my information I put forward to it, I said that I was well aware of, um, the logistics and the legislation that are involved in this. And the opportunity to provide them is obviously difficult, but we still carry out, we put people for parking in these places that we can't provide them because they have to take up multiple spaces. And so then these people have to come in and argue potentially, um, the, the circumstances. So I'm, I'm not sure whether it could just ask again, could there be some review that we can see how we, um, administer the people who have to park in these situations? I would rather they're taking up two parking spaces than some that I've seen is parked in the bus lane on Main Road, and parking on pedestrian verges. These are vehicles with trailers and obstructive views, and then causing really difficult, um, traffic hazards. So my subsequent question is, you know, we, we're the ones who are administering the, um, finding of people for taking up two spaces when they have a trailer or a large vehicle. Is there something, can I ask for a review of that situation, that we can, um, be more proactive around that space? I obviously don't expect an answer on that one tonight.
Could I just add to that, Mayor? Alderman Dunsky's point is very, but the fact is builders come here, we're supposed to be open for business, the trailer is an attachment to their union, the council will leave it anywhere, and they've got to come in here, do business, and hope not get booked in the time that they're here, and get back out again, and it really is difficult.
It's not just the parking, it's also the space to manoeuvre in and out as well.
Getting back out then.
And the person that first contacted me was booked, um, they came in and put their case to council, and they had their fine wage, which was fair, but they didn't have any other options, but they tried to come in and park.
We've heard of this, one of those drive-through ones that we got for staff, because they can drive in and drive out, because somebody can't back to save themselves, I just know it, it really is necessary for, you know, for business, the traders can come in, park, get in and out, as long as they're doing business and can show they're doing business. So if there's a way of doing something, it would be very advantageous.
I'd like to compliment Alderman Dunsky on this issue, as a recent frequent visitor to the health centre, not only is it hard to get into the...
We're not on to that one yet.
Come, come out.
You've jumped ahead, we're not on that issue yet.
I'd like to thank her for raising the issue.
Yeah, thank you.
Hopefully the engineers will come up with a workable plan.
Yes, thank you. So Alderman Dunsky, is there a second question on notice?
Yes, again, I'm, I'm appreciative that the staff will have a look at that when it's served. I just will add one fact, I did speak to the staff in the health centre, and I said there has been a pedestrian incident there, there was a person who was hit with a car. Um, so that, that they were aware of, and there may be others. And every single time I'm in the area, you do see that pedestrians crossing, albeit illegally, whether they do that or not, if they hit my vehicle, it's, it's a tragedy. So, um, I do appreciate the information that's been put there, and that we'll get a report back.
Thank you. Any, um, no, there's a full for need to write down.
No, but I've got one more question.
One more question?
Uh, a question potentially for the general, general manager. So last week at the, we had the Anzac Day service, and the memorial was re-tiled in time, which was very appreciative, but it's very noticeable that some of the lettering is now failing and things like that. Is that part of the refurbishment pro- process that's to happen?
Through you, acting mayor, my understanding was that it was going to be addressed, but I'm not sure of the details. Um, my, I, I believe seeing a document that indicated that, um, there was just, there was going to be both re-tiling and, and repaired the lettering, but, um, might need to hand it on to the director.
Uh, the, the lettering was looked at, um, with only so many times it's actually agreed to, because it's left inserted into marble, and, um, it's been peeled out a few times, and the stone license said that, um, it's probably at the end of what they can do as far as... I'm going to look at some other options, a bit of white paint, um, the marble. We did look at, um, replacing the stone, new, new stone granite, um, although that's a lot more expensive and would take a lot more time. We have to, uh, eyes out for grants, because I'm patient for our grants that are available for, uh, refurbishment of all the morrows. At this point in time, we'll probably go with the paid option, which doesn't last as long in the weather.
Thank you. Uh, just a subsequent comment to what you said there. So should, um, like maybe placed rather than repaired, will, there are, I have people listed on there that are not listed alphabetically, so it is not necessarily, so would that be reordered so that everybody is listed alphabetically i- if it was redone?
Um, mayor, we had to go through, uh, Heritage Taz to do the re-tiling, we'll have to go back through to do any other renovation works, and it may be a case of, um, taking their direction. We might have to, uh, replace it like for like, um, however, we'll hope that we have the alphabetical, um, order.
It was a comment from a member of the public that raised it with me, so that they said it should be alphabetical to be here, but so I just raised that if there's an opportunity to rectify that, that would be great. Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you. Um, we're now moving on to items...
I have a question on notice.
Fine, yes?
Okay.
Yep.
So I just have something I'd like to raise, that was brought to my attention on the weekend, and probably the director can answer this. In regards to the Clermont War Memorial, I believe that we're constructing a toilet block on the left-hand side area of the war memorial, is that correct?
Uh, mayor, the toilet blocks, um, going relocated as you face the, the border. You know, it is on the left, hard left, and it's near, um, where there's some, um, adult exercise equipment.
Right. So... Uh, council aware in that area, there is a plaque dedicated to, um, a digger by the name of Jack Curwin, whose ashes are being turned under the low pine that is growing there, and I believe that they potentially, that that pine tree in that plaque, I've been led to believe, potentially impacts on the construction of the toilet, and I've been led to believe that that low pine and Jack's ashes are going to be removed, but not relocated anywhere else within the memorial park. Uh, is the director aware of that?
Uh, no, I'd have to check that, but any, um, works that are undertaken would go through a, um, dog boy dig, which includes a heritage assessment as well.
Could I ask the director to look into that and come back to mayor on what the reason was?
Yes, I, I'm sure you will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions with that notice? No. So now we're moving on to seventeen point one, a notice of motion from Alderman Stuart Slade regarding the Glanville Memorial Sewing Pool. So can I ask you to introduce this one?
I, I know that, um, mayor, acting mayor...
Okay, a second one? Alderman King?
I'd like to propose an alternative motion.
That, that's if this lapses?
Yes, so my, 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 just my alternative notion will be that we take this back to a workshop, workshop and deconstruct it because the matters are of varying nature, and some of those arrangements have been completed, and then bring the other matters back, um, in this return.
I'm happy to second that alternative motion, mayor.
Thank you.
So through you, acting mayor, so we've got a, may we, we're going to notice a...
I'm going to, yeah.
Sorry?
I, I haven't said the motion yet.
No, through, picturing, I was just going to say that we've got a, um, to clarify, we've got a, we've got a motion, notice of motion from Alderman Slade, uh, which has been seconded by Alderman King. So, um, then we've got a second, we've got to deal with that motion before we get to the second one. So is, um, is Alderman Dunsky's, um, a foreshadowed...
Yes, it is.
Foreshadowed motion, thank you.
Okay, please proceed.
Yes, uh, the, the motion is, as, as it reads, uh, acting mayor, um, with paragraph three now being, being deleted as on the 23rd of April, uh, the general manager dispatched a letter, probably sleep, to, um, the premier also, the, the minister for sport, that was Sybus, so that takes that part out, and part...
What are you asking for the motion to be changed, by having that deleted?
Be fun.
Are you asking for that motion with...
No, just, 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 um, the section three to be deleted.
So that's a change to the motion before us, so it makes it a change.
Yes, um, unless the second one is prepared to accept that?
No, I'm happy to accept that it be taken. It's not like it's been added, it's been taken out, so it's a little bit less painful than being added.
Okay, please proceed.
And number five is, uh, this is just next thing to be added, will change, um, set it by the May 2024, by, there's some more time, by June 2024, I'd like to put in there, Alderman King's happy with that.
So it's a amendment accepted by the mover and the sector? Okay. This one, wants to move to June?
June. My understanding, all the changes are take three out and extend May to June.
Yeah. Okay, please proceed.
By the end of June or by the beginning of June?
Oh, just June.
What is all the noise? Come on, invest to go.
Happy start.
Hopefully. Thank you. Alderman Slade.
Yeah, thanks, mayor. Um, the, the, we've got a, my reasons for those, the fact that, that, uh, I think most of us attended the, uh, say the Glanville Pool Public Meeting, and I think we've got a better understanding, uh, why, uh, supportive groups initiated the meeting. I think it's important also that, uh, when I'm referring to this notice of motion and to the reasons, that we remove any personalities and looks clearly at the facts that I've, I've got here. Uh, look, I think if you didn't lead that meeting and just think in hindsight that all our communications were spot-on, uh, I don't think that would be in the, the right direction to which you would have been thinking. I think it was fair to say that there are some more effective communication methods that we could have used as a result of, uh, relaying things to our, um, pool users. Uh, also, relation to that, um, I've got here that, uh, uh, under these things, elected members now have a better understanding of why the pool closures caused so much frustration, and also that elected members now have the opportunity to recognise this breakdown and willing to offer an apology. I'm really quite sincere about that, with the ambition to do better for the greater city community. I think the staff, management, and the ornament have done a very good job throughout this process, but there, there has definitely has been a communication issue, and I think that's the least we can pass on, that whatever the communication, communication issue was, that apology i- is offered. Um, I'm one of the very few elected members who can actually be in for a process like this, having been involved in the Rose and Lantern for the nineteen nineties. And, uh, there's some similarity here, the fact is that, um, a group of us had to take on, uh, Big Brother in relation to the... on, uh, Big Brother in relation to the state government, the, as the, um, um, people who were looking at giving us a package or had to fight for a package. The, the bank and of course the council and of course, um, that wasn't too easy. But as a result of that, we did get a fair package for people who, who were suffering at the time. But the, the analogy there is that I certainly know what it's like to work hard and to make sure that, uh, landowners in this case here, um, our good community, uh, listened in relation to difficult circumstances. Number four is clear there that the pledge was made and we have followed that up. And also hoping that during stage five, by reasons there, that we can look at extending pools hours operations and also look at perhaps extending the, uh, availability of other forms of, of, of heating as well. I think it's important that, uh, a liaison group is created and has representation from council, uh, and ourselves, uh, as staff, elected members, members of the community and other stakeholders, who've got a genuine interest in the pool. That group, uh, would just meet, uh, on, on a needs basis and would just simply look at propositions that come forward. It wouldn't be a decision-making process, it's more of a direct input where people, in particular people who feel like they've been isolated through the pool situation, that, uh, they can have their say in a very, let's say, uh, more constructive way and one that comes directly through to council. Um, our sins moving on and our sins are starting to develop in relation to the pool improvements once the money comes forward. And in, in, and, and in summary, I'm just putting that all on the table because I believe that, uh, if we work in a positive way with the early reopening of the pool, um, we could end up with a, a good result considering, uh, some of the pain that everyone has gone through, especially the, uh, uh, people who used to use the pool. Uh, and I think, um, with regular meetings and timeframes, elect, um, Acting Mayor, we can overcome this in these steps of our life in my motion.
Thank you. Would anyone like to? Thank you.
Uh, I'd just like to go through all those points just quickly. The first one about apologising, I don't have a problem with that, um, if it's done in an appropriate way to the community, that we could have done better. But at the same time, I think I want to congratulate you tonight, you and Ronald Quick and Alderman Cockshut, Lord Monorton, the fact that, um, Miss Trues were pulled up. And I think there's a balance here, it's a two-way street and I'm really grateful for the way that those things were pulled up. So I don't have a problem apologising to those that may have been, um, concerned about the way we handle things and you can always do things better. So that's the first point. The council ensure that all communications about the pool conveyed, I think that's going to happen, so I'm comfortable with that. There's nothing wrong with putting it in writing. Council office considering extended opening hours, well, that's, that's a consideration, whether it's cost-effective or not, whether we've got very few people using the pool now. So again, that, it wouldn't take very long to cost that, see whether it's even realistic to do it. Uh, if people don't go on the wall, they probably won't go on the cold weather. But, um, and the last one, a pool liaison group, well, I think we've already agreed to that as well, so we're just putting it in writing, so I'm comfortable with those things.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Alderman, Alderman?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to speak why I will not be supporting the motion tonight. And it's not because I don't think that we possibly warrant an apology to the community and I don't feel that it's possibly, of course, we may do, we may do need to look at maybe some sort of pool liaison group. Unfortunately, the, the way the motion reads, I'll, I'll go through item one. The council elected members apologise to the greater Glenorkie city community, including pool supporters for not initiating a public meeting per their request sooner. So while I, you know, I condemn, I'm sorry, I commend Alderman Slade for his motion, we're just being asked to apologise for not initiating a public meeting. So I feel we need to take this motion back to a workshop, go through everything in detail we've done, have a look at how we dealt with this pool situation. And then if an apology is warranted, then maybe we frame up an apology on the appropriate level to address what we've done wrong, whether it's been poor communication or whatever. But just to apologise for not holding a public meeting, but that it, 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 it's not good enough for me. Um, the second one, the council will ensure that all communications about the pool are conveyed promptly to supporter groups and other members of the community, where this is clearly relevant and not breaching legislation. Look, we've, we've, we've learned from the early days of the pool, we're doing that much better now, so I feel we've addressed that in some way. Item three's been addressed by us all signing a letter. And item four, personally, I think we won't, we've invested all this money into, uh, MI Global to go through a process. I'm quite confident that MI Global will explore extending the hours of the pool. They'll also explore improving the heating system, that's their job. So we need to wait until that report is completed before we start running around asking council officers to consider this and consider that. On item five, council establishes a pool liaison working group. Once again, in this motion, this is very vague, it's got no framework, it's got no idea, it's got no guts. I want to see something like that come back to a council workshop for us all to debate, discuss and get it right if we're going to create a liaison pool group. Let's put some framework in place, let's put some detail in the devil and let's do it properly.
If anyone else would like to address it, thank you. Alderman Cockshut.
Thank you, Acting, um, Mayor. Um, I think, me personally, I don't have nothing to apologise for, I don't think any elected member has anything to apologise for on the table. I think we're all guided by the expert opinion by council staff, um, and communications peo-, uh, stakeholders at the time. And then going through that process, we were obviously getting a lot of information, which was really downy around the state of the pool and we had to act very quickly based on the advice of the general manager in regards to the health and safety of the community, which it came of as a shock tonight in, you know, elected members, as we've just been, you know, elected to our new term and, you know, most of us, majority, obviously were new to the council and we weren't expecting to walk into a catastrophe like just on the pool, which, you know, a loss of a big community asset. So, um, it was a shock for us and the community and I get that a lot of people are upset and it is a very emotive subject, but, um, hindsight's a wonderful thing, maybe we've got a power to meeting, but at the, at that moment in time, the advice was to see with our columns and direct to the website and to say, some people didn't even believe in the safety, um, issues with the site, they didn't believe in council, that, what we were saying. So unfortunately, that's their opinion, but we're here now. I think the meeting was held, I think we've had really good dialogue, uh, with pool, um, supporters and questions and, um, on our socials, in terms of our communications on Facebook, um, there is a specific page on the website of FAQs and any updates which happened along the journey of the pool, which we've done. Um, obviously the state government was engaged and they did come to the party to cover the MI Global consulting seat, which was two hundred thousand dollars to cover that aspect, which is now ongoing. And that is a separate, the council has been done independently so we can get advice. Um, and MI Global's done their, um, stalls at Clermont Plaza in Glenorkie Shopping Centre as well. Um, I believe that with a liaison group, it's hard to determine as a report says how's it work, who's involved, um, these bodies can become politicised sometimes, that's not how do you get elected to represent a pool ranging groups. My personal opinion is we communicate out to the wider community in regards to this and just keep communication lines open. Um, I don't believe we necessarily need a subject group of three people, ten people, whatever it is. Um, I, we've removed the letter about the premier, which is fine, we already agree to that, but, um, yeah, look, I think we're in a good space to where we were. Like I said, emotions are pretty high, but all we can do now is what we've agreed on, we've got the priority works identified, we've written to the, um, premier, which is signed by the law, we're sticking to five million dollars, um, and hopefully we can get the pool open sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Um, just like to make some points very clear here. Uh, firstly, it hasn't taken me until the recent public meeting to understand and hear the community, uh, their feelings and feedback has been very obvious from the day it was closed. And if it's only taken Alderman Slade until the public meeting to realise this, then that's disappointing. I've heard from many daily users of the pool that they haven't been able to use the pool and it's affected their lives. And then you add to this the ground tolls of community desire to have a pool and that loss is not, that, that is, that is, that is impactful to you, to, to myself. Secondly, I, I, I really don't feel like the motion is in the best interest of the community and I don't believe either I or any of us should put our own self-interest in the way of what is best for the community. Thirdly, for a council to formally apologise, for me, would have to be a significant and monumental event. And I can tell you that in the past, there has been significant incidents and upheavals in the past, utterly embarrassing situations here at council, this council. But the community has had to endure and it was embarrassing and shameful for our community. Yet to my knowledge, no apology was ever given. That's what's worth an apology. Our council team has put the community first every time. Our communication has been done and we have over communicated at times. And perhaps some messaging could be improved, mistakes have been made, that's something that the council and I've seen them hear our feedback and learn from that. I've heard it with my own ears and I've seen it with my own eyes. Mistakes are going to happen and we have to be prepared to wear some mistakes. And we have to be prepared to let the team make some mistakes. Fourthly, and part of this, uh, motion, uh, is concerning because it implies that we as elected members are instructing or giving the council team and officers instruction. And I don't think that is necessary and I don't think it's acceptable to be in the motion. I have full confidence in our council team and the actions that have already happened with council, because it's about actions, it's not about words, it's about actions and what we are delivering with MI Global and what we are seeing in terms of our vigour to chase the state government for the repair of the pool, we are doing that wholeheartedly. I'm confident that the community engagement around the pool will continue and I'm not sure another group to talk even more is beneficial. Let's stop with the talk, let's look at the actions and let's continue with our engagement with our community and let's back our council team to deliver what we all together, from council, from community, from pool group users, from non- pool group users, that we together can have something that is the best thing for our community. Understanding the figures, understanding what it's going to cost, having a, a full picture. We, we're providing updates at council meetings and I'm confident that we will continue to do this. So considering all that, I won't be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Anyone else like to add to that?
Thank you. Um, I'd thank Alderman absolutely, Alderman Cockshut, they've actually trumped some of the things I didn't want to say, so I won't go back over those again. But, um, if we go back to item nine today, we approved a process for committees, references and working groups and the review there. And here we are proposing another group that's not fitting in with that particular item. So that's an example of something I would like to see go back on workshops so that if it does, is, and it comes back in the right context. Um, I'm sure that everybody around the table could attest to that we have been, um, fairly robust in our discussions with the general manager and the staff on some of the items that possibly could have been handled better. That's certainly been taken on board and we've seen the change in the process. And the process is as open as it can be and potentially, as was mentioned, maybe over communicated. Unfortunately, we've put all the truths out there and then a lot of misinformation is still being put out, which is so disappointing. And then it's quite a personal matter too, which is just not perfect. It's the issue, not the man. So as mentioned, I've put up the, uh, foreshadowed motion to take it back to a workshop and bring any appropriate information back to a later council meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else like to add to the run? Thank you.
Uh, I've known Alderman Slade for many more years than I care to remember. Uh, I thank him for having, I suppose, the gumption to put these five motions in front of us tonight. It's disappointing that, uh, none of the pool supporter people are here.
I remember it.
Kim's world one, out of, uh, you know, sixty thousand Glenorkie ratepayers to, uh, to hear a really fiery, uh, discussion. And I thank my colleague two doors down for his, uh, really fantastic speech, mate. In my fifteen years of federal parliament and my couple of stints on the council, I honestly don't believe I've ever done anything that requires me to apologise because I do it from the best interests of, of the people I love and me call the punters. Not for my self-aggrandizement, but for the punters that elect me to this cherished position. When it comes to communications, there are communications and communications, as we know, in two thousand twenty-four. There's TikTok and Facebook and X and all the other variations of the alphabet. And most of them are used not to communicate in the best interest of people, but to run agendas that are usually contrary to the best interest of people. The letter to the state premier has gone off and, uh, discussions are being held as we speak. A liaison group I've raised with the pool supporters and they're not interested. They're not interested. As, uh, Alderman Cockshut said, or I think Alderman, uh, you're right, it might have been Alderman Cockshut said that, you know, a good committee is two.
If I'm.
Someone from the council and someone from the state government. You can put the pressure on them, but when you start casting your net out to hopefully include everybody with an interest in the pool, you're going to end up with a committee of fifty and, uh, nothing will ever be done. Uh, sadly, Alderman Slade, I'm not going to support any, four of the five motions. The only one I could perhaps agree with is extending the hours of operation, but I'd be guided by our council team as to what the improved heating system costs will be and, uh, how much subsidy is required by the council if we go from six to eight months. So, uh, thank you for bringing the issue to us. Hopefully the people who are at home, uh, are listening. Uh, I think we've almost pulled out. And hopefully at the next council meeting, we'll be having some other agenda items, uh, more positive, um, more to do with social cohesion than a pool that's been absolutely flogged to death.
Alderman King, do you like that?
Thank you. Thank you, Acting Mayor. I just want to acknowledge my fellow elected members and the, the management of council and the community here tonight and the depth of feeling that, that people are feeling about this issue. And also, um, the depth of feeling from you Alderman Slade and your confidence in the council, which is really heartwarming and it's one of the reasons that I didn't want to vote for the vote of no confidence, because you've just got to believe that we're here doing the right thing and we're on a continual path to improvement. I am glad to have the opportunity to apologise to the community because I think they do, um, deserve an apology because they don't have a pool right now and they're really feeling hurt. And that's been my position from the beginning. I think it's really important to acknowledge that this is a phenomenon across, across Australia, so pools across Australia that were built in the Second World War era are really coming to the end of their serviceable life. Um, yeah, so we are one of many. It's not to excuse how hard it is. Uh, but when I first came on to council, I, I look at governance in my professional life and I was really impressed by the governance of council. So it's been extra tragic from my position that this has happened because as, um, Alderman Yaxley was referencing, this council did suffer a big shock and massive reputation damage in two thousand eighteen. And the ministerial directions that came from that, a four-year process of real tightening of the governance of council, and that was really evident to me when I first came on board and I was really impressed. So it's, this has been extra unfortunate and it really shows me that mud sticks, it's an expression you hear a lot, but that's, um, yeah, it's really become apparent in the, the community narrative that's now out there. And I've got to acknowledge that that's out there because of the lack of information, the suspicion, the corruption. And I've got to acknowledge that that's out there because of the lack of information, the suspicion, of corruption and dealings behind the scenes. But I think because we've had that mud in the past, we really have to actively fight against it, be proactive, do um public consultation in the language that people understand early, give them more information than they need in a way that they can understand. So that's what I hope for in future, um, that we're out on the front foot in these situations as much as possible. Um, yeah, I think that's what we have to do, that's our legacy as a council going forward. Um, yeah, my, my only question around this motion is, is this the best context? And I'm happy to apologise all day, so I'd like to say sorry to the community and take this opportunity. Um, we've heard, as Alderman Yaxley was saying, through your emails, through people bailing, bailing us up in the car park at the shopping centre, finding us at the cafe, we, we're palpably feeling people's pain and angst. So we know. Um, and I'd like to ask the community how they would like us to say sorry. Is this the best context, context for us to be saying sorry right now? And if not, let us know what we can do to make amends. And yeah, look forward to a positive, proactive future for all of us.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Ken?
I've given before.
Uh, right.
Tell you especially.
Yes, well, I wanted to say that I'd like to commend Alderman Slade for trying to break the ice. It's what I think the situation is. I think we've um, we're in a war we can't win. And I think he has tried to na- navigate a path forward. Recognise not only the phenomenal effort of the community to bring this issue to our attention, but uh also to find ways to try and appease and take the heat out of the argument. Um, one of the issues we have is that we are charged with governance. We are privileged with quite a bit of um heavy duty language and information and reports, most of which we are, well, I believe all of them we've put out to people. And I've found it incredible that you can have one report and one side will read it one way and the other side will read it um another. So imagine our shop when we turned up to council one day and the general manager says, um, guess what guys, I have to shut the pool under health and safety obligations because the facts of the matter are that general manager could go to jail if he allowed a public facility to run that was as dangerous as this one had come. Why it had suddenly failed so quickly, I don't know. Um, there were, we, we decided to look forward to how we could fix it rather than trying to find people to hang. But we found that we got hung instead. Um, so uh I think we, that we have taken, it's, we could, we are told under the Local Government Act, we had to make decisions based on professional officer advice. So we were loaded up with professional officer advice and there was nothing very supportive of that pool. In fact, to our horror, we realised that we really could have been putting people at harm. Um, because the electric system was older than the sixty-year-old pool. Chlorinator had corroded, there was no bund for the chemicals. The slide is the most dangerous thing I've ever seen. Feasts from the little kids' pool goes into the big people's pool. Um, you know, like it just goes on and on. And whilst uh there was a feeling from the officers that we possibly had another two years of sweating this resource, I think the community should expect that a sixty-year-old pool at some stage is going to meet its demise. It was leaking, um, the, the officers noticed it was leaking. So they installed a specific meter to test the water leakage. Even that has been disputed by the public and all sorts of conspiracy theories have come up around that, including that the council was diverting the water towards the KG five oval, which would be madness seeing as it's a synthetic oval and also you wouldn't water any sporting ground with chlorinated water. But trying to get these sensible answers and arguments to um into a debate that is so hostile um has become so frenzied. And this is where I'm not certain um that our, our communications have been done with the best of intent. And we have discussed and approached so many ways of trying to deal with this. But I've got to say, um, whilst I, I also would like to apologise for anything that I've been perceived to have done. But I have been accused of being corrupt. Um, I've had my reputation slandered. Um, I've been bullied and harassed because I have a pool, which, you know, is like most of these pools hardly ever gets used and is a bottomless pit of money. I have been hashtagged, Sue Hickey, I have my own private pool. Uh, don't vote for me, don't let me, I'm corrupt. I've had to answer corruption charges because I am on a board of an aged care organisation. And apparently we were given half a million dollars from the government to fund the Barossa Pool. And that half a million dollars was overturned in an election by Tony Abbott, it never came through. There was no money from the um Salim Sultan family and uh in the interests of the elderly people we were taking care of. We had precious funds have to go to the elderly who were not allowed to even use that pool without paying a fee to the contracted professionals, which were the YMCA. So quite frankly, I am really jacked of being criticised and um I, I wouldn't mind an apology from a couple of people who've spread some really malicious lies and mistruths. The, the thing about that we're going to sell this pool site, a really valuable site to developers. It's all a lot of myths and mistruths. So I do support, uh no, I support Alderman Slade and I would like to um really say thank you, Alderman Slade, for trying um to have this wedge because there are people, including the good Mrs Kim Churchill, who actually came to see each and every one of us to try and broker a sensible way forward. Instead of being yelled at by some of the other groups, which have in fact broken apart and don't even like each other most of the time. So um I, I would do say that Mrs Churchill has been um, you know, a very reasonable constituent to deal with and has done her best to try and calm the storm. So under that circumstance, Alderman Slade, I still think we do need, there is work we need to do. We can all be hot-headed and say we're not gonna apologise and all the rest of it. There's apologies to all on both sides of this debate, I, I believe, and I doubt I'll ever get one. Um, but uh I would like to say I am sorry that we have, it, it, we've put our staff through this as well. They've had to endure some shocking things, silly accusations. I remember Luke standing at that public meeting and getting berated over the meter as if it was an imaginary thing. So, so I'm sorry for our staff, I'm sorry for the community, I'm sorry for everyone around us at council for, for what we've done. But I do say hand on heart that we have done it with the best of intentions, the best of our abilities and with governance number one all the way. And that's why we've had to support our general manager with his position. We couldn't have him running a, a dangerous pool. We could not have, I could not go to bed at night thinking that some young volunteer lifesaver was going to be electrocuted because we hadn't been able to keep up with those electrics. We had no idea of how bad that pool was until we went, you know, had a tour for ourselves. And so a lot has happened in this last, I don't even know how long it is, is it six months, eighteen months?
Uh, it was, the, the council, the first council meeting on this was um July last year.
Right, so there you go, so it's three quarters of a year. And um we've seen a lot of arguments, we've seen a lot of angry commentary and we've had to sit here and absorb it. We have not been at, at the peril of having a code of conduct taken with us if we were to argue back. So that was our dilemma. Um, but what our officers have tried to do is put the information up on every sort of thing. So it's on the website. I acknowledge some people don't have access to modern technology, but we've always had the doors open. I note that we did have a couple of, we had a Mack Young and MI Global one and we had another meeting, third public meeting held on the pool on the twenty seventh of March, which was this um public meeting that we were appealed for. Um, earlier offers, earlier offers by council offices to attend community meetings about the pool were rejected by those community groups. So that is the pool groups not wanting to talk to professionals or hear the side of this council. And um, I had another point on that, um. Got where that was going. Um, but the other problem is we are now, we do have a motion, a petition, another petition before us. And this is very difficult for us because that petition clearly says things that we've already agreed to. We're already doing them, we've agreed to them. Under the law, we have to accept that petition, but we are going to be facing, if we're lucky, a two hundred thousand dollar surplus for this year's budget. We've worked so hard and that's the best we can come up with. And if we're forced to the elector poll, it's going to cost somewhere in excess of two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand. It's a political exercise as far as I'm concerned. And we have heard the poor people loud and clear. There's no mistaking it. Uh, we're on everyone's Facebook, we've heard it all. Um, and so I think that's a tragedy, that's the greatest tragedy out of this that's going to occur and it's going to cost the ratepayers and Lenorki valuable funds that we could put towards the pool or to any other important thing to attend to. So having said that, I don't think your motion, that all the best intentions is going to get up tonight, but I would like to see it reworked at a workshop, if that's okay. Um, so if for that situation, I'll um, I'll be supporting the alternative motion, which I guess we'll ask, oh no, we'll put yours to the vote. Yeah, put yours to the vote. All those in favour? Oh, yeah, sorry, I picked.
Yeah, thanks, man, I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. Um, I put this up because um I wanted to apologise to the community for, I just believe they've been through a, a pretty fair tough time. We've been through a tough time as well, Acting Mayor and the staff has as well, but by golly, the, the, the community has, and not, and in particular, the, the quiet achievers in the community, as, as I call them. So uh that's why I put it up. I also put it up because the fact is that I thought it may have had a, a bit of inference on some people who wanted to go ahead with the uh, uh lobbying for an elector poll. I thought that this may have been a compromise. And that, that word, well, that word, well, truly would have been a, a good outcome as well. I don't change my view on the, on these things here. I just think at times communications could have uh been done better. And I stick to what I had there and um, I said, and I um, I will continue to work in a positive way for a return of the pool for the interests of the city.
And I was probably doing this out of turn, but I think the big problem we've had here is if this had not been, become a political issue, we still would not have had the five million dollars to do the work. We could not have afforded it. But it is a political issue and hopefully we're gonna now get the money. Um, so we're putting it to the vote?
Hmm.
All those in favour, raise your right hand, left hand?
Two.
Two, three, oh. Those against? Oh, thank you, so that's carried?
No, 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 it's, it's.
Sorry, it's.
Alderman Dunsey?
Yes, so I have a foreshadowed motion that the items that are listed um in this particular agenda item are taken back to a workshop to work through. And uh, um, you've possibly got the wording there already, General Manager. Uh, it's the context of my motion anyway. And then if we determine things need to come back, they can come back to the next meeting.
Thank you, um.
Thank you, Mayor, so that I've got the, the proposed motion, we brought back to a future council workshop to be worked through.
What proposed matters out of that?
Would you like a bit of urgency around that?
I think, yeah. I think the, the timeframe will be around the, the ability of the staff to do that and the ability to schedule the workshop as well. So um I'll just bring it back as soon as possible, I don't wanna put a timeframe on it and, and have to process necessarily rush. Um, I've probably, probably raised most of my points in the discussion um against the previous motion that was here. But uh, you know, there's some of those things in there, definitely operational, I think we need to do some thought that the general manager might need to direct his staff to make some of those decisions and, and not us. Um, I think I've raised all the other points I did want to and, and say we, I, I'd be good to take it away and deconstruct it in a workshop and split the matters up. We've already seen some of the matters have been resolved and removed from the original motion as well. So I think that there's some work to be done there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Alderman.
I would just like to uh reconfirm Alderman Dunsey's um comments in regards to, I think it's vital that this goes back to a workshop. We have a great opportunity here to get this right, to workshop it, obviously, decide if we do need to deliver some sort of apology. And look, I too personally wanna see the community have a pool. I personally wanna see the community have a redeveloped pool. But we've gotta be realistic here that it's gonna be a long, hard battle with the federal and state governments to get funding for a redeveloped pool. And while we may have to through this elector poll, if we get an overwhelming response from this elector poll that they want to have a redeveloped pool, we've got two choices. We can ignore it or we can fight hard and lobby hard with the state and federal governments to get the funding. But the community needs to realise too, if the federal and state governments are heartless and they don't provide us with this money and their absolute overwhelming desire is for a redeveloped fifty million dollar pool, that while we don't want to as a council, we may have to come back and levy every single ratepayer in this community somewhere between a thousand and two and a half thousand dollars. So I just want that to be mentioned here right now, so they fully understand the ramifications of their elector poll. But for me, the right option here is with Alderman Slade's motion, take it back to a workshop, pick it apart, take the bits we need to work on and develop and bring them back to a future council meeting.
Just a point of order, Acting Mayor, just, who was the second?
Uh.
Three Acting Mayor, so we had a um, uh initially um Alderman, Alderman, second question. Foreshadowed, yeah. Um, just a comment, I don't think it, I'm, 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 I'm okay with taking it back. I just, I just don't want the staff to be distracted. We've got time and energy, we've got a pool issue that is um, you know, front of mind right now. Um, so that's my only concern, but I'm happy to take it back and discuss. I just don't want it to be a distraction in the actual material, so.
Uh, I don't think anything could be a greater distraction than the means we're in now. So we have to deal with it. Uh, anyone got any other comments? Right, um, just another point on that petition. Those petitions are non-binding on a council. So the, if you go to a person with a petition, say, would you like a pool in Lenorki? You're probably going to say yes. If the second question was, would you like to pay an extra thousand dollars a year on your rates for a pool? They're just probably no. And this is the predicament we're in. And so um electoral, electoral polls of this nature are um put out. But when they come back, if it is not in the capacity, the financial capacity of this council to fulfil that wish, it doesn't matter if a hundred thousand percent of Lenorki residents say, we want that pool. If we are unable financially to do it and we cannot raise funds from anywhere else, then we just can't do it. So I'm horrified by the fact that we are gonna be put into this predicament. But I do also admire the community tenacity, their door knocking and um, you know, going around trying to get petitions signed. So that's the beautiful thing about democracy. Any further discussion? Hopefully we can resolve this very soon, um, all those in. Oh, yes, please.
Yes, thank you. We've heard lots of point put around today and, and one of the perceptions is that we don't want a pool as elected members. We'd love to see a pool, but we wanna see the best value for the money for the whole of the community as a facility that more people can use, the best pool, the best aquatic facility that we can provide. And we're working down hard to lobby all those places and parties that we need to. We will not drop that resolve and that will happen. But some of these issues that we're facing, you're hearing us discuss now, we have to wear a governance hat and consider it in, in that perspective. So we are supportive of a pool, we're all on the same page with that. We've just gotta go through the government's processes.
Yes, and in case I'm fine otherwise, um, I did have notes here from earlier, which were that we have, I've personally spoken to the Premier and the Minister for Sport and we've also sent letters, letters today of all of the copies of those two minutes, they were sent last week. But to Simon Baracus, Madeleine Ogilvie, Ella Hadad, Josh Willey, Christie Johnson, Viker Bailey and Helen Burnett. Because if you remember, this funding was um particularly the one from the Liberal Government was based on a. was based on a Liberal majority government. We don't even have a guarantee of that. But having said that, we'll do everything in our power. We also are conscious of the fact that the pool was only being used by 100 people a day for six months because it's an outdoor pool. And just as Alderman Dunstby has said, we really want the best facilities possible for Lenorki. We don't want patched up, you know, dodgy things. We really want something nice and smart. And maybe the nice and smart is a learn-to-swim pool or a warm water pool. But that's why we've got consultants trying to engage with the public to find out what's in the best interest of Lenorki. Any further conversations?
Nope. So then I'm going to put the motion. Can we clarify the wording of this motion?
The proposed motion brought back to, I've got now the next practicable council workshop to be worked through.
Okay, so there's not clear sort of outcomes around it, it's just workshop.
Take it to the workshop.
Okay. Thank you.
That's good enough.
Yep.
Let's do the motion to the vote, those in favour? None of us, thank you. Thank you for that informed debate.
Moving, going to close, Council Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman King, thank you, Alderman Slade. So we're going to close the opens.
We all agree with action.
Sorry? Oh, that's fine, I was just going to say what we're doing. So we're closing the public meeting to members of the public. Thank you for coming and I wish you a very good night.